And Merry Christmas. I'm calling Monday, December 18th, 2023 Education Operations Committee meeting to order. I am seeking a motion to approve the minutes of November 27th, 2023.
Make the motion to approve as presented.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. With that, I will go to recognize speakers and students who wish to make public comments. And we have no one signed up, so we'll move on to our next agenda item. Next agenda item is recent change in district plans related to restructuring and district administration and Red Granite Governance members are seeking options to develop the Red Granite Charter School space. In addition to the Hewitt, Texas campus, the Executive Director of Monk Botanical Gardens expressed interest in allowing the Charter School to lease land on the MBG site. The vision of Red Granite Charter School is consistent with the mission of Monk Botanical Gardens. Administration, Monk Gardens staff and Red Granite Governance members will describe the two options to host the RGCS and are seeking board direction on the preferred site. And with all of that, I turn it over to you.
And actually, Michael, on our campaign, she's remote, so she'll do the first half of the line.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
We can.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for having us. We're excited to share this new opportunity with you today. So you can go on to the next slide. I'm just going to be sharing a little bit of background information on our federal grant and our enrollment application update, so you can go to the next slide. So I covered this briefly, but wanted you to have the exact numbers from last week. So our total grant award was $1,974,000. And so it's a five-year grant, and this just shows the distribution over those five years. So right now, we are currently in our first grant cycle year. It started October 1st, and it goes through the end of September. And our first year is $538,000 that we need to spend. There's the potential to roll over a little, but they really want you to spend down the full amount that was awarded for that year. If you don't spend it down, they feel like you don't need it, so then they potentially can take those funds away. So it is our goal to work to spend those funds down. Year two is a similar amount, $564,000, and then it kind of lowers from there as we get into our operational years. Next slide. So just to demonstrate a little of how those grant funds can be used and our intention for the use of those funds, some of them will be used on personnel. So we have posted and have a few applications for a principal and a lead teacher position. Those can support during our developmental year, so that's right now, and then into our first four years of operation. During our planning year, right now, we can pay, we have budget set aside to pay their salaries. Once those folks, if they move, those same people move into positions with the school, a portion of their salaries will come from our operational budget, and that goes for any instruction or direct work with students. But any of their work that still is planning of the school, grant funds can pay for that planning portion of the cost for those staff members. We also can pay teachers for curriculum development. Those will be through extended contracts in addition to their teaching contracts. We can pay for substitute teachers to participate, to cover for our teachers to participate in professional development conferences, school visits, things like that. And then any administrative expenses that are specifically for development of the school or grant oversight. And then there's travel that can be paid for with those grant funds as well. Next slide. And then a huge portion of the grant funds will go towards equipment, technology, playground equipment, classrooms, science, library, music, outdoor education, all of the supplies that we need to really get the school going. So everything that we need to buy to create a school. And then for facilities, we specifically designated just over $150,000 for outdoor classrooms or modular classrooms, which we'll talk more about what we imagine those to look like. Next slide. And then contractual, so we can utilize contractors to support in the development of the school. So that's currently supporting me and helping the school start. Megan Hughes, we have another contractor that's doing our website and social media development and marketing. Next slide. And then an enrollment application update. Next slide. Yep, so right now, these are our numbers and kind of how they're distributed throughout the grades. And again, this is just so far without our marketing campaigns starting yet. So pre-K seven, kindergarten six, first grade is our highest right now, which is 10, second grade two, so we have currently 25 applications for enrollment, and so that's 28 capacity, 28% capacity for the school. Next slide, and I will turn it over to Megan.
All right. Is it easier for you to do it, or should I do it on this? Okay, so this is obviously a discussion about where Red Granite will end up. This kind of walks us through the, how we're going to present this. The first is kind of talking about where we stood and where we stand now, which we're all very well aware of. There was a five-year charter contract that was signed back in 2023 at some point, I don't know the exact date. And then the restructuring plan was passed by the school board, and then after that, the school board voted in favor of us being placed at Hewitt, Texas for the fall of 2024 with plans to move into that building when restructuring began district-wide in the fall of 2025. And then very recently, where we stand now is the five-year contract still in place. In addition to that, Red Granite Charter School was awarded the grant, and it was in the image of that contract. And at the same time, the restructuring plans were reversed by the school board, and as a result, we have no clear place to reside inside the district. So why Monk Gardens? The cost of the district will be similar, whether it's Monk Gardens or Hewitt, Texas. We feel that residing in Monk Gardens creates a long-term solution for the school. It also gives the school board time and space to understand how they want to develop their future direction without our, without any pressure from us to need to open up more classrooms and more grades. And there's a lot of synergies between Monk Gardens and Red Granite. Monk Gardens actually approached the school when they were aware of what was happening with the restructuring and asked that we be, we become part of what of their space. So this was, this was something that Monk Gardens actually wanted, and we did not instigate. And they're very excited to have us there. The, so Monk Gardens, which they will go over in detail later in this presentation, has existing expansion plans which would allow Red Granite to piggyback, and we'd be able to create economies of scale, which we will talk about. The public likes this, it has good optics, it's less controversial. Monk Gardens will get to expand, the location's more central, the location is not near Quarry. I only mention that because there has been some social media posts about the Quarry, and so it's of note, not near Quarry. The location is well-established inside the community, and they have a very well-developed pre-K program that's expanded rapidly, and there's significant demand for that program. And the Wausau School District will very likely see income tax, increased tax revenue, mostly from increased open enrollment, including Monk Gardens' rising students. And ultimately, the perception will be that Red Granite is part of Monk Gardens. This isn't a not, this is not a new site, it's a further utilization of an existing space. So let's talk about some similar success stories. One of them is Tamara River Community Charter School, that is our sister school. Our curriculum is largely modeled off their curriculum. Seventy-five percent of their students are open enrolled. They started with 50 students, they're now up to 240. They're in their 11th year of operations, and they were a partnership with an environmental station. So they utilize yurts and modular classrooms. They have people coming and going from that site on a regular basis that are not students or parents of students. They're, these are just some photos from that space. Kikapu Valley Forest, actually, if you take the time to kind of look, they actually received some very significant national news coverage. This is a pre-K through second grade, they're outside the entire day, once again, out of forest, it's a forest school. There's, you know, not overly concerned with things like security and stuff like that. And then the River Edge School, that's located on 480 acres. It's also in a nature center, which is open to the public, and they do kindergarten through fifth grade. So let's talk about infrastructure. We know that this is a concern for the board. So we would contract our pre-K through Monk Gardens, and so we would still be allowed to continue opening pre-K through second. Part of why this is important is our grant dollars and grant funding are contingent on us opening certain grades at certain times. And so if we don't open those grades, we will, we will sacrifice funding. We would want to open in what's, for lack of a better term, bare bones approach, very similar to what Monk Gardens did. I remember when my children first started attending, we were there the first year, and there wasn't even a yurt, it was just the promise of a yurt. So we kind of showed up, and it was like, well, they have a couple months to get this together, and I'm sure they will. TRCCS started in a very similar fashion, and honestly, the Wausau School Forest was managed this way, there was no security, no Wi-Fi for many years. Red Granite Charter School is willing and able to pay for all costs related to construction of modular classrooms now and in the future. So we have a contractor who's ready, willing and able to build these structures and would have three to four structures ready by August 1st of 2024. What we would need, and what we foresee needing to be able to get this started in a successful way for our first year would be approval from the Wausau School Board, the Monk Gardens Board, and the city. And Monk Gardens has already, you know, told us that they'll support us when we approach the city to get the permits. We don't need access to internet or plumbing during our first year. There's three restrooms that are in place at Monk Gardens already, they're connected to the city water and sewer, they're ADA compliant, and they're single-sol and safe and secure. If for some reason, it became clear that there was further need for bathroom spaces, we have already looked into this, and we'd be able to invest or rent a, you know, restroom structure of some kind. Internet needs are going to be very low for our school, especially in the first year. There is a very specific and intentional de-emphasis on technology as part of the pedagogy. And so our students aren't going to be utilizing laptops and Chromebooks. What we would need is a hotspot in order to actually meet the requirements for attendance and teacher needs. It wouldn't really be for children, or sometimes I know that Monk Gardens, you know, uses a hotspot or a phone to like help identify plants and animals when they're out doing hikes. And we're more than willing to pay for those. So let's talk staffing solutions, this is another big concern for the board district. We don't need cafeteria, students will bring their own lunches, that is legal. Students who qualify for subsidized meal plans will have that provided by the Red Granite Charter School. Our only request would be that we would be allowed to contract with a certified kitchen so that we can be reimbursed through that, through the state or for the government. We don't need support staff or specialty teachers now or in the future, we would just ask for support around special education. There's no need for staff or groundskeeping or custodial services. Monk Gardens has told us already that they're willing to maintain the grounds that we would occupy for the first year, and that would be mowing and snow removal, and basically anything to kind of keep the space looking appropriate, and that we would then come up with our own terms in subsequent years. And then in terms of the spot cleaning for the restrooms and the yurts, that can be done by staff, they, there's also ground staff that are looking into the bathrooms on, you know, twice a day. And then we would hire a cleaning service for the modular classrooms that would probably come in, you know, once a week or once every other week, but we're, and we would cover those costs. Let's talk about security, because I think that's another concern. So we'd follow the same procedures and policies that the school forest and field trips follow at this time. As part of their improvement plan or capital development plan, Monk Gardens will be upgrading security and extending their fences, they will talk about that later in this presentation. Monk Gardens already works very closely with the police and the sheriff's department, with inspections and emergency procedures. And Monk Gardens has run a very successful school program there for several years without any incidents or situations. And of course, during that time, it has been open to the public as well. Location, Monk Gardens is about one-tenth of a mile from Thomas Jefferson, so this could be an existing school that we could use for staff. Once again, only special education. It also gives us the opportunity to potentially utilize that bus route so that kids could get dropped off very near to the school, where Monk Gardens will be seven miles from a fire station in EMS, and it's on a city bus route and regularly receives students at this time already. So how would it work in the future? And this is a very important part, because of course, this is not a one-year contract, it's a five-year contract. So one of the big things which we're going to be talking about is that Monk Gardens has an existing plan for significant expansion that's already in place. So they're very eager to have us work with them as part of that expansion. And what that would mean would be we'd be able to leverage existing fundraising networks, we'd be able to share costs related to fencing and plumbing and high-speed internet, and that Red Granite is prepared to cover those costs related to future expansions. And what are we asking the district to provide? At both Monk Gardens and Hewitt, Texas, we would ask you to cover electrical costs on a monthly basis, we'll cover the costs of making sure that running electricity from the existing lines onsite. We know from talking to Monk Gardens that there is electricity already basically in the space we would be, it's just a matter of running the line from there to the modular classrooms, which will become, will come equipped with electrical use possibilities. And then, once again, the shared staffing for special education. So let's talk about these modular classrooms. So the classrooms that we're looking at would be constructed out of repurposed shipping containers. It's been done in multiple schools across the country already. One of the most notable is actually in Duluth, so this is not a weather issue either. It really aligns with Monk Gardens' kind of principles and ideology, we want to focus on environmental stewardship and innovation. They can be highly individualized and beautiful in appearance, and there's also minimal impacts to the grounds. So there's gravel pads, you do not have to dig a foundation, is the biggest piece here. There's no, you know, no crawl space, no foundations. You lay down gravel pads, and you put the classroom on top of those gravel pads. There's also an option for these pressurized wood planks, I mean, there's more than one way to do it, I guess is the main idea there. So this is a quote that we have from the contractor I mentioned, who I'm in regular contact with, he works out of Crandon. We would probably buy shipping containers, well, depending on how things kind of worked out, we would buy them in bulk, we would house the shipping containers at a large yard in Crandon. We would do that because bulk buying allows us to get a discounted price on the containers. This quote includes electricity, it includes 13 windows, it includes insulation. Basically, what you would do is you would weld out the long side of the container, put them together using like a bolting system, and then you would throw up drywall around the inside, insulate that with spray foam insulation, and in the ceiling, you would do the same, install a drop ceiling with insulation. And then, of course, they can be individualized very easily based on the classroom and the needs. We would ideally do an administrative building as well in the same, with the same design. The one thing that's actually really nice about this is that in terms of the federal grant funds, one of the key pieces of how we spend the money is it has to be something that if the school were to move, we could pick up and move it with us. These modular classrooms do not require any type of semi to move, so you buy a specific trailer that hauls the shipping containers, and all you need is like a one-ton truck to pull them. And so moving them, and then the way that the contractor would put them together, you can very easily separate them out once you need to. So we'll have three combined to make a roughly 900-square-foot classroom, we can break those apart as needed to move them. If it were to come to that, that's not really our intention, but it needs to be part of the plan. And once again, the quote comes in just under $60,000. So these are some examples of what shipping containers look like. They're, you know, they're, you can look it up online, you'll come up with a million different contractors that are willing to do it, and a million different designs utilized all over the world. Some of them are in Africa, some are in India, sometimes they put them together to create like an entire school, so it's, it's all connected, and other times it's separate buildings, as you can see. Oh, sorry. So there's a lot of options, it's kind of more like, probably the biggest limitation is how much money you want to spend, right? Okay, so the partnership, and this passes off to Monk Gardens.
So as Megan said, we approached them, the school district first, just to say, hey, we might have spots. And as we've explored it over the last week or so, we realized how great the potential partnership is. So just want to give you a little idea of who we are. So Monk Botanical Gardens, we're celebrating our 20 years this year with 30 acres of a developing garden on the northwest side of Wausau. Our mission is to cultivate well-being in people, communities, and the environment through experiences that engage, educate, and inspire. So in particular, we have focused our programming on environmental education. We are the only organization in the area that offers environmental education year-round to all ages. We have 64,000 visitors in 2022, and we contributed over $4.2 million to the Wausau economy last year. It just noted that every major city has a botanical garden, and so it's an asset that attracts employees and families to live and work here. So thinking about the community benefits of us hosting the Charter School, one is good economics. We can share staff, we can share professional development, we offer before and after care for working parents. Currently, we're running a full-day 4K program that also offers that before and after care. In addition to that, as mentioned, we're developing our site, so there's some potential cost share there, maintenance and grounds, office space, indoor and outdoor teaching space. We do have already established Sprouts Garden Preschool, in the two years of our attendance, it's doubled, and 23% of those students are from out of the district. Also, good optics for all of us. So a three-way partnership between the Wausau School District, major nonprofit, and also the Charter School looks good for all of us. And it should be noted that we have had support from the City of Wausau, Visit Wausau Chamber of Commerce, and all the major foundations have supported the gardens, our expansion, and especially Sprouts Preschool, because we are serving a need. Wausau School District partnering with us has actually been a long time. So we have partnered with the Wausau School District for nine years in community connections and also G2M programming, not to mention your entire kindergarten comes out to us every year. So we certainly have worked with your group. Please note that we do have 4,500 students in addition to our preschool that comes through four education programs. And there's obviously, clearly, you have worked with other nonprofits, and the YMCA is a perfect example of one that has been successful for you. Finally, increasing both of our impact, we have similar missions, both wanting to get kids outdoors connected. What the gardens has is our leadership has extensive experience in developing effective nature-based programs that integrate with curriculum standards. We can leverage each other's contacts and fundraising efforts, and every student coming to the gardens will learn about the Charter School and vice versa, just building attendance on both sides. So just to talk a little bit about our development of the site, right now, what we're looking at for the Charter School is a two-acre lot that's on the corner of First and Campus Drive. It is lined on two, on two of the four sides with trees, so they can feel nice and tucked in, and then of course, it gives us room to plant and create some more space. There's enough space for their expansion, zoning is already slated for educational institution, and as we've talked about already, 30 acres of natural space to explore and learn. And we do have a tornado shelter onsite. So what is coming next year is we will be installing Phase One of a three-phase-part project. Next year, we're putting in fencing around the 30 acres, we'll be installing an English garden, completing a children's garden, renovating the pond, resurfacing all main trails to be accessible, moving our entrance from First and Campus over to Fourth, which obviously is key if the Charter School's going there, and putting in a parking lot and a gatehouse. Phase Two is an education and visitor center, there's some opportunity there for potential sharing offices, again, more education space. And then finally, Phase Three is a classroom expansion as well.
So now we welcome any questions from the board, we've kind of hit you with a lot of information, so.
Well, to start with, I don't think you, no pun intended, missed any one stone that had to be turned.
We tried very hard to anticipate your needs.
You have given us a lot of information, so let's start, if there are any questions. Start to my left, Courtney, do you have any? John?
I have a couple. This is exciting, I mean, with a turn of events, so it's kind of nice to see some excitement about a different potential that's maybe better than what was initially proposed. So that's exciting to see. A couple of questions, the development of the Monk Gardens site that you were just kind of talking about, that was intended and sort of planned prior to this conversation, I would imagine.
Correct.
So the Phase One, you said that's already been raised, and that's moving forward in 2024. Phase Two and Phase Three, you kind of have in parentheses cost share opportunity because it might be shared spaces, educationally office, otherwise, what does that look like from an expense to the district standpoint, or is that part of grant funding that's already available?
Really good question. So I don't, Camille can chime in, we're not assuming that this will be grant-funded, it would be fundraised. So as I mentioned in one of the slides back in the slideshow, we're prepared to raise the funds needed, and we're not, we're not planning on asking the district for funding for those things.
Okay, great. Then the only other question I had was, what is the responsibility of busing for the district, for students that are school district students? I mean, I know obviously if they're outside of the district, they are responsible for getting there. Is that district busing?
So, and Josh can kind of correct me if I'm wrong, but I, we often don't bus to charter schools, at least to start, because of course, these children can come from anywhere in the district. What we tend to do, similar to other programs, is if a child can get onto an existing route, we let them do that. And I think, Josh, is that about, is that about it for now? Yeah. So we wouldn't add additional transportation costs or responsibilities.
And that was a little different, I think, because when it was Hewitt, Texas, it's like, it's already part of the route, obviously, and that's why we mentioned the fact that Thomas Jefferson's so close, because that gets them less than a tenth of a mile from Monk Gardens, and we're hoping that most people can get the rest of the way, or, you know, there's city buses, like they said, that drops off. I also anticipate that many of our students will have parents who are just going to drive them.
Sure. Okay, great. I mean, I'm really excited about this option, so thanks for sharing.
Lance?
Tell me about, tell me what happens when we've got 200-plus students there, which is a prob, a good problem that I think that we'll have. Does this site afford that opportunity to happen? Because I really think that's what's going to happen.
So we're already serving 4,500 students a year in our programs and events. So, and we have only developed about 10 of those 30 acres. There's, there's certainly more than enough space and more acreage than, what was that, Hewitt, Texas?
Because it, and it would be facility-related too, because having a group come in and out during the day is much different than having 200 students onsite all day long with staff.
But the expansion includes, so that little section's two acres that they can expand and build their buildings on.
And I think the, so I think maybe one of the important distinctions that we tried to make is like, in the first year, we can be bare bones, because we're not looking at 200 students, we're looking at four grades, and if we contract pre-K with them, like, they've already got that covered, right? So we would contract to meet our, what we said we would do in the grants and what we said to the community, that they'll cover pre-K, and then end the expansion in 2024, certainly, we will need to have more restrooms, and we will need to have more buildings. and electricity, and, you know, so, but that is, it gives us a year to do all of that. And I still think that what Red Granite will look like in the end is not going to be the same as a school that's part of a traditional district. But obviously, we've thought about the fact that the capacity is going to expand. We're not going to be able to use two, three bathrooms. Will no longer be sufficient when we open to the sixth grade. And may not be sufficient in the first year, but we know that our contractor would build us a restroom or that we can find one. And then work on the plumbing and these bigger issues associated with fencing and those kinds of things. But what we, what it gives us is a year to do that, to fundraise with Monk Gardens, and we know they're already putting a lot of those facilities in. And that's where a lot of those synergies and economies of scale come from.
And then the other question I have is regarding security. Not so much the fencing, I mean, our playgrounds aren't, most of them aren't fenced, especially our more rural schools. It's more of the visitors in and out because, of course, we're very strict on who can come in and out of school property during school day while students are present. You know, if my child is out of school during the day, I know that there isn't anyone in that building around my child that isn't authorized to be there. And any non-staff that come through have like background checks and things that happened before, they're even allowed to even go in the building. So what happens during a regular school day if the garden is open to visitors? So who controls, who's allowed to go onto the property with the students? What controls that?
So the two acres would be, they wouldn't have access, the public wouldn't have access to. So the idea, again, would be the fencing would kind of control that. But you have to think about when your kids go on a field trip, they're out with the public. So when these kids are doing a specific program at our pond, for example, then yes, there will be public. I've spent my career running environmental education programs in situations where the public comes in and out, whether it's for a park or a botanical garden. And there are ways that you train your teachers differently than you do a classroom teacher on how you manage a group outdoors and how you secure, you know, how you make sure that the children are safe. But obviously, yes, there's probably not.
So it sounds like the vast majority of the time, it would be sort of an outdoor classroom in that one area. And then there would be other times, it's not going to be on a regular basis. It's the regular basis thing that is different versus your day-to-day schooling.
And I know Camille might be able to chime in because she was so involved with Tomorrow River. So Camille, because they've managed this from the start.
Thanks, yeah, I think it is that delineation of space. So if anybody comes onto like that area where all the classrooms are and this like the school's space, they would have to check in at the office, just like they would at any other school, get a badge or a visitor, you know, sign in as a visitor to be within that school space. It's when the students are doing, you know, excursions into the gardens that they might encounter the public. But same thing as stated, it's like when they're, similar to being on a field trip, just more often, they're with a teacher, they're, you know, it's an expected activity. They know what spaces they're going to be using. But when they're in the school space where the classrooms are, same procedures of checking in and knowing who's on the site.
And I mean.
The public would.
And I can say from, well, being a parent who had students at Monk Gardens and then, you know, going into the space when my kids were showing me what they were doing, even in Monk Gardens, there's these spaces that even if they're off the school grounds, they're still like used by the school way more than the public. Like, it's like, they're building these like crazy forts, and you would never know they were there unless your child literally walked you back and said like, "Look what I'm doing here." So I think even within Monk Gardens, there's the part that's very public where you do like the light shows and there's all these, you know, kind of facilities or stuff. And then there's kind of this other space of Monk Gardens that I think is less treaded on where.
It's all wild.
Yeah, it's like wild.
There's a whole section we don't allow the public.
Yes, and, yep, and that's where the kids are.
Okay, anything else?
No, overall, I think it sounds good. I think it's exciting, would probably need some legal involvement to work out some of the details whenever we partner somebody else. But overall, I think it sounds like a great opportunity.
Tremendous, thank you. Joanna?
Hello. I'm interested in knowing if there's a pickup and a drop-off plan that has been discussed. I had my son in summer school, and I know the parking lot can get a little congested at pickup or drop-off.
So we haven't drilled down to those level of detail. Just, we haven't yet drilled down to that level of detail. But I'm assuming prior to the expansion that's happening kind of in 2024, we'll still use that parking lot that you're talking about because, of course, the two acres are right there. And I think we just have to come up with a way. I mean, it's not something we've drilled into those levels. I'm not worried about coming up with a solution.
We can figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, there's enough space where we can have people do, drive a circle around or something, but because the main parking lot, you'd be able to probably pull in and then come back out. I say this being very familiar with the space. I realize not everyone knows what I'm talking about, but I don't foresee it being an issue.
I did see that the cost of the electricity would have to be paid by the district.
Just for, yep, that's, the only cost for asking you guys to cover is the monthly electric bill.
Is there an approximate of that monthly?
Oh, I don't have that. I can tell you that in the image of what we're thinking for the classrooms is this year, we would be looking at three modular classrooms that would be roughly 900 square feet each. They would be heated with electricity. They would be outfitted with indoor electrical wiring, so obviously, we'd have to have some type of light. But I don't foresee it being extensive. But I don't have a ballpark even, I haven't looked into it.
Okay, and I do ask this because, you know, as we're working on our restructuring, we're working on cutting some of our overhead and cost. So, and I don't know how that'll look like to other schools where we're cutting resources, but we're having, and I think this is a great idea, but this is just me thinking, what the other class or schools will feel when we're cutting resources, but we're adding on. And that's just the only thought that I had on that because I didn't, I wasn't aware that we'd have to cover anything when this idea was presented to us. I thought it would be all covered.
It will fit into our general operating budget. So if you think about the per pupil allotment that's coming in for the students for our grades, it's not outside of that operating budget. We're not asking for anything outside of that budget.
Okay, no, I understand that better.
And we're not asking for custodial or ground service or anything like that, and we don't intend to do that in the future either.
And I did see the request for special ed. Now, I know that that's pretty tight already from what we do have.
I think the issue is not money, it's staffing.
Yeah.
So like, that's the same for us, is it's not about saying, I mean, we'd be, if we could find a special ed teacher, we would happily pay for them, I think. The problem is that we're anticipating we're going to face the same challenges you will, and we can't, we have to offer special education, and we can't do that without access to a special ed teacher. And that's the only reason, it's the one we hung on to. Art and music and that stuff, we can definitely sort out with like, you know, visiting artists, or Camille has a comment too, so.
Yeah, I just want to mention for special ed, so the only students that will be offering special education services to are in-district students. So you would be providing those services no matter what school they're attending. So they are part of the public school system. And, you know, the district will be providing special ed no matter what location they're at. For out-of-district students, it's unlikely that the district will be accepting open enrolled students that have special ed needs. That's a determination that will take place in January. So that cost is no greater than it would be for those students no matter where they're held. So this isn't an increase in cost to the district.
Okay, got it, thanks for that explanation.
Thank you. Thanks, Cam, I'm so glad you're here.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Do you want to add something?
I was just going to add one more thing, just around costs to the district, just so the board's aware, everybody's aware. In our contract, we kind of spelled out that the expenses would be similar to every other school in our district. We will, you know, we'll be paying for, you know, staffing and those things because this will be our school and our students and our staff. So that is outlined in our contract.
The only other question I had was the modular classrooms that were the shipping containers. Is that something that's going to be covered in the grants or through fundraising?
So, so yes, so essentially, we have been able to kind of, we've had to re-fugal our budget a little bit, but we've been able to get 150,000 set aside, which roughly covers this year. We will fundraise the rest, so if you think they're about 60,000 apiece, that does not include transportation, it does not include the gravel beds. But talking to the contractor, he thought all the gravel bed work would be about 75,000. So we will, we have it set aside for this year, and then we'll fundraise for the rest. We have no intention of coming back to the school district to help fund for those.
Okay, and then you said you were buying in bulk.
Maybe.
Potentially.
Well, so we have to, there's still some, we have to talk to Monk Gardens about this more, but in theory, if we were going to put down, let's just for, to make the numbers friendly, 10, so then you would need a total of 30 of these shipping containers. We would buy, and I've talked to the contractor about this, so we would buy in bulk to save us, you know, X thousands of dollars, and then we'd be able to house them at a space that we already know is there to securely house them, and then we would bring them down as needed. Also, allows the contractor to have the shipping containers there to work on because he already knows that the first year is like three, but then the next year, we're going to need four. And so obviously, he needs to have them there to be able to design them and make them work. And then they would be transported from Crandon to our site individually. And then some of the work would have to happen onsite because of just basic issues with construction. You're not going to put drywall up and then move a container down, the drywall will break, things like that, but he'll frame them out and stuff where he's located.
Okay.
Cory?
Well, my question would be about the containers. The school will always own the containers because they're going to be movable.
Yes, they will, we would own them and we would pay for them.
Okay, my question, actually brought up by Joanna, is about the electricity. Has the gardens, or have you talked about the power supplying them? Well, think about them being modular units and just like an RV might have a big cord, right, going to a central power station. Public service is going to put that in. Who's going to pay for that? That's going to be something, but that's going to be something that's permanent onsite. So that's going to be a benefit to the gardens then as
So that would be.
Something they're always going to have.
Yeah, and the electricity, you can talk more fluently. The electric is already there, it's just a matter of like bringing it out of the ground. I was like, I don't know enough about it, but it's like, the line's right there on that two-acre slot.
Patrick.
Yeah, I was like, I don't, I don't know how to talk about it.
Patrick, we're doing a facility and grounds. We've had high-level discussions with the city, the WPS, so we do have a line that runs along Campus Drive. It's above ground currently. Our line runs through this two-acre lot. We did just upgrade and double the size of our panels this past year. Whether that can feed this currently, I do not know just because of the time, how quickly things move.
It's been about a week.
But, so the power, it's not like we're going to have to trench in the entirety of line at this point, but those are things that would have to be still sorted out. But part of this discussion too, we are going to be doing, maybe not in this exact area, but with the capital campaign of 2024, there will be trenching, boring of utilities going on regardless.
And I think that's.
That's where there's possible cost share, but we need, you know, we need to figure all that out.
Yeah, that's just.
Well, I'm asking because that will be a, you know, a site improvement. So where the modules are movable, so I'm asking specifically about who's paying for that?
So that was.
Since it's going to, you know, be an improvement to the site. So at least we have to be aware of that, if the district's picking up any of that.
You're not, so we, it's probably, like I said, we present you with a lot of stuff. It's embedded in the PowerPoint, but Red Granite will ask you only to cover the monthly costs of the electricity. We will cover whatever costs are associated with getting the electricity to the buildings. We, as we just talked about, like, we don't know exactly what that looks like. We just know that there are electrical lines that are very close to those two acres. And we're going to work.
Well, to make it very transparent for the district and the public, would be best if there was a separate underground or overhead permanent site with its own meter that would feed all the buildings.
And then you can like know your bill, yeah.
That's what we'll do in year two. This is kind of, again, like the bare bones year one. How do we make sure we have enough electricity for those three buildings? But as the school expands, yes, definitely, we'll have its own. Panel will know exactly how much our site is using for electricity.
And you got to remember, the first year, we're talking three modular classrooms, so it's not like we're laying down 14 classrooms. And, you know, we will build more as we expand the school per the Charter Contract and Grant, which.
Part of our expansion will include solar power as well. So that may be an opportunity, so.
We just haven't had a chance to like dig down into those level of details.
Okay, otherwise, seems like a positive move, so.
Okay, here's, I'm going to finish up real quickly with just a comment. You know, having started a couple of charter schools, I understand what you're going through in that whole process of five years and having this all taken care of, we got to be on a plan. And I appreciate the fact that you've already looked into that, you've given us a lot of information. I think we can pretty much move on with this by, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of support from the board for Red Granite Charter School to reside at Monk Botanical Gardens.
Second.
Any further questions? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for finding another, another solution.
Yeah, well.
And it's a closer area.
Yeah, we're really excited. It's kind of like, like Karen was saying, sometimes it all works out for the best.
Yes, it does.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item, number five. Ms. Cartilage will present the open enrollment space determinations for 2024 and 2025. Along with Kale.
Good evening. This is the report that we bring to you each year where we just talk about open enrollment space and what we have available for us. So from a general led perspective, pretty easy, each of our buildings are open that we would accept students from other districts to come into our district for open enrollment. The only point of clarification that might be a little bit different this year, our Red Granite Charter School, just based on timing, what will happen for students who are interested in Red Granite, they will apply for their lottery system. If a student is chosen to be in the Red Granite, they would then fill out open enrollment paperwork to enter into the district, which we would review at that point. So from a, from the general led perspective, pretty straightforward and pretty easy.
Okay, and then in relation to special education, we are in the same position that we were in last year. So at this time, we do not have any seats available in any of our special education services and programs. We're currently contracted out right now for occupational therapy and speech and language pathology and school psychology services. And we also have a few openings within the district, both our support staff and teaching staff, we're working on this.
Any questions, any follow-ups? I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of regular and special education non-resident spaces available under open enrollment for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. I'm seeking a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Now, I'm going to just keep on moving right along. I'm calling Monday, December 18, special meeting to order. And I'm going to start off with agenda item number two, which is Mr. Vagut and Ms. Foster to, will present an update on the Girls' Storm Hockey Co-op Agreement, which has to be done at this time in order to meet everything copacetic.
Good evening, everyone.
The button, there you go.
Better?
You're good.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are, I have Jason Foster, the Athletic Director at Wausau West here, as well as Josh, who are, Vagut, who are part of the discussion surrounding the co-op renewal. Which button do I, thank you. So the host of the Storm Co-op is DC Everest, and they have put forward the paperwork necessary to continue. to continue the Co-op. The Co-op will be made up of East, West, DC Everest, and Mozeni. That sometimes flexes a little bit, but the application right now is for these four schools to come together. It is an existing Co-op and preserves opportunities for students at these four schools. So it is our recommendation to renew the current Girls' Storm Hockey Co-op for the next two years.
Questions?
Let me just, I'm gonna, I, I said I would refrain from saying any comments or questions or giving any opinions about my feelings about charter schools and how they're run in Wisconsin, so I will refrain from doing that. Co-op, co-op, so.
Well, I have a question. I hope it wasn't what you're hoping that I don't say.
Uh, maybe.
So, so I support this, and one of the reasons I support this is because of the WI, because of all these co-ops, it's almost impossible to not have a co-op. And, and I don't think that's good for girls' hockey. Is there any WIA plan to somehow start moving away from this so that individual schools can have their own team and be competitive?
I can speak for that, no. The reason for it is hockey is a very expensive sport, so at this point, there, either on the boys or girls side, I don't see anybody starting up a hockey program from scratch who doesn't already have one. The Storm Co-op kind of fluctuates, so our daughter, who is now a senior in college, graduated in two thousand and twenty, and when she was on the team, the Co-op also included Merrill and Whittenburg, no, not Whittenburg at the time, Marathon, who had a couple of girls, Merrill had a couple of girls. As of right now, as this, as this Co-op gets renewed, Merrill and Whittenburg are still on the old one, they will be coming off, the new Co-op will be back to, excuse me, just the four original schools, Wasa East, Wassa West, DC Everest, and Mozeni. So our Co-op is actually shrinking a bit, but to think we would ever get to a point, I would say right now, today, we're probably as close as we've ever been to, if you, if you took the axe out and swung it right now and split it in two, and said, Wassa East and Wassa West is gonna have a team, and Everest and Mozeni is gonna have a team, we're as close as we've ever been, because I think Wassa has, the two Wassa schools have sixteen, West has fifty, East has one, and then the other two have seventeen between them. The reality of that situation, though, is not dissimilar to boys hockey, where if we were to, first off, that's keep, that's cutting it really close, to have a team with only sixteen girls and a team of seventeen, you're praying everyone's eligible, nobody gets injured. So if you were ever to get to a point where you did that, the other factor in that is, if I go to, if the, I mean, traditionally, the best players have come out of Wassa West, and the most players have come out of Wassa West, yep, that's true.
You don't wanna get into it, they've been done that.
The reality is, so they have sixteen, right now, both of the, both of the really good goalies reside within, or come out of the Wassa West team, so first off, they don't have a goalie, which is important in hockey. The second thing is, if there are families who believe that Wassa has the stronger team, while they have sixteen girls today, through open enrollment, I would say Wassa, the Wassa team would very quickly probably have twenty-three girls, and they'd be down to twelve or thirteen, leaving them really struggling to have it. Is it a good system? No, I think you and I probably agree on the co-ops. The only thing I, on the flip side, what I would say is, a sport like lacrosse, that is brand new to the WI, the Lacrosse Folks, not the WI, but Lacrosse Folks, kinda have put some things in place to attempt to not have a similar thing happen in boys and girls' lacrosse that happened in girls, and quite honestly, in our boys hockey to some extent too, like they're, they have some stock gaps in place to try to limit those co-ops and a more closely, a more closer view on it, to try to break them up sooner rather than later, so it's what it goes.
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking along the lines of, and this could be totally wrong, but just thinking there's kids out there that just frankly aren't good enough to play for what is basically an all, this, we would've called this an all-star team back when I was a kid, and I wouldn't have been able to play on a team that combined this many different schools together, and so, and so maybe it's, maybe I'm wrong, but it just seems like there's kids out there that probably don't have the opportunity to play, because the only opportunity available is all-star team play, which is what these big huge co-ops are. Not that I don't support the motion, so.
If you get the store, with the thirty-three girls, we have, we have a full JV team and play a full JV roster, so all thirty-three girls play as much hockey as they want, whereas if we had a team of seventeen and nobody played varsity, in those really important games, it probably only stayed two, two and a half lines, and maybe five, six of those girls probably wouldn't get any opportunities to play.
No, you're right, Lance, you brought up what I said I wouldn't say.
Sorry, this wasn't planned.
So consequently, yes, the WI, this is also a topic that's been taking place with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, as well with a representation of all the school districts to the WIA, and I think the WIA realizes it, but I always keep on saying they should look westward and see what Minnesota has done to expand lacrosse hockey and move it into a position where schools then have it, so I think we all see it the same way.
The two last things I would say is, one is, it's hard to grow it because it costs so much money, it's an expensive sport. And number two, as far as the WIA goes, I don't think they're actively doing anything one way or another, like not as good or bad thing, I think girls' hockey, unfortunately, is probably heading the wrong direction right now, where at one point, we had thirty, thirty-plus teams in the state, I think we're down to twenty-seven or twenty-six, so we're probably going back towards more of it being a club sport than a WIA sport. Not this year, next year, within the next five, but maybe in the next ten, I would say.
Well, let's keep it going for our girls' sake and, and move it forward so that they have the opportunity, so. With that, I seek a, a motion to renew the current girl, uh, Girls' Storm Hockey Co-op, East, West, and the other two schools for the next two years.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
The Wassa School District four-year-old kindergarten program has entered into the program agreements with community collaboration sites since two thousand and two. In the past five years, the Wisconsin, the Wassa School District have had agreements with the following sites, Wassa Childcare, Mountain View Montessori, Woodson YMCA, Wassa Branch, Newman Catholic Schools, Kara Rakowski, 4K Principal, and Early Childhood Coordinator, and Julie Shell, Director of Elementary Education, will review the program agreement for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
So they did that at the, at Ops, so actually we'd be looking for action, unless there's anything you wanted to add?
If not, I'm gonna seek a motion to approve the 4K agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. The board will be presented with an update on the high school math curriculum that we started last week and had a discussion about, and we will continue that discussion for today, and thank you for being here this evening.
So Scott and I are back, and Doris and Jason are with us too, in case there are further questions that you have, but Scott has been working with our math teachers to answer some of the concerns and the questions that were brought up last week, Monday, so I'm gonna turn it over to.
So one of the things that was asked for by the board last week was just a roadmap to what this resequencing process looks like and how this rolled, how this rollout happens. So I've got a, a map of basically three different cohorts, our current ninth graders, eighth graders, and seventh graders, and after seventh grade, then the system is in place and doesn't need modifications from there. So a couple of things we'll talk through, first off, for our current ninth graders, there are really three different pathways that they're currently on, I'll start at the left. When you take a look at that pre-algebra, Algebra One group, again, we have different offerings at East and West right now, which is that color scheme you see there. What we've talked about is that all of those students then, in their sophomore year, their tenth grade year, will be moving into this new course that rolls out in the twenty-four, twenty-five year, Math One, and then in the following year, will be in Math Two, all right? As that happens, we will still have to run our second year course, which is geometry currently, and if you take a look in the middle pathway, that's what you see, so our students that are currently freshmen enrolled in Algebra One, those students will be going into a geometry course next year, which does not change our FTE, because eventually in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, if you see that purple course now, those FTE that would have been teaching geometry before would now be allocated towards a Math Two sequence. You'll see our section furthest to the right, these are like our gifted and talented, our grade level advanced kids are already in geometry, so it doesn't affect them next year and the year after, their Algebra Two level or beyond. Questions on the first step? Next step then would be our current eighth graders, and there's really two pathways out of here. Currently, we do have some gifted and talented year level accelerated courses of algebra that are happening at the eighth grade sections. As I said, next year, in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we still need to offer sections of geometry to make sure that those are accounted for. The rest of those students that are currently at grade level in eighth grade math will be moving to Math One in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, then into Math Two in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Meanwhile, other sophomores will be in Algebra Two or Beyond level. Good? And then moving forward, and this becomes essentially the future pathway for all students, our current seventh graders will then move to eighth grade math. The only thing that is also new at eighth grade then, in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, will be instead of sections of Algebra One offered for those students that are grade level advanced, that course will be renamed and resequenced to Math One. Then in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, you will see those GT sections then, that were grade level advanced at eighth grade, will then be moving to Math Two in their freshman year at the high schools, all right? Moving forward then, this is how we kind of envision those pathways. And to recap some of the conversation that we had last week, the big celebration that I see and that the math department sees is that when you take a look at any of these pathways, so the top line being students who might not be high school ready by the time they hit their freshman course are moving into foundations of algebra, or foundations of math, excuse me, the middle pathway for students who are on grade level are starting at Math One, and the pathway for students who are accelerated, who in their freshman year will be looking at Math Two or Math in Construction. When we take a look at their final high school math course at the far right side, every student will have access to, if they're up to the challenge, an Algebra Two course, which is a big celebration for us, because what that provides is a gateway to higher education for any student who's looking for it. You will also notice in that upper right corner that there are other options for students that might be going into different fields, for example, intermediate algebra is a fourth year course that might not be as rigorous as Algebra Two, but will still allow students who may be going to a tech program and will need to continue their math a fourth year to maintain that practice. Couple other points to review. Some mockups of what some potential course descriptions might look like, I tried to leave them vague, knowing that some of the specific topics that we're looking at for foundations of math, real and rational numbers, expressions and equations, inequalities, but then for integrated Math One or Math One, that those specific standards that we're teaching are kind of a general, they are the, here's the typical things that we see built into that first semester, or that first year math course, through some of the different curriculums that we're still looking at, and some of the core resources we're looking at. And then on the next slide, we also have kind of an outline of what Math Two might look like, that brings in some of those typical second year courses that we see in some of the sequences for some of these potential resources.
I'm just gonna make a comment here, I appreciate what you have done, and the fact that I asked for a flow chart, because that's what I'm used to, and you put the flow chart out there, and it's easy to see how it is going to be implemented. The other thing is, I was able to speak with a couple of my friends from CISA nine and talk to them about the area and what they're trying to do, but I also found out through their, the conversation, that all the CIs are trying to implement this throughout the state of Wisconsin, and with Karen's comment about the description, also talked with a couple of university people to find out what they expect, and this is what admissions do, they look at the title and then they look at the description, and you have that explained there, so I, I just wanted to, if you have, and if you have made some conversations and talk, I'd like to hear that as well. I know I've talked to several people that I know personally, and I was really happy to find out what they're trying to do around the state of Wisconsin now. Sounds like we're all in the same boat, that we're trying to move students, find where they're at, and move them forward from that point, and be able to, if they're going to be able to accelerate, as I said last week, I like acceleration, and I don't wanna hold any student back that can be accelerated, the flow chart explains all of that, so thank you very much, department heads, working with you and moving forward. So questions from the, the board?
Um, I just, thank you, I really liked that flow chart too. I had the opportunity to have some more conversations as well with current district math staff and retired district math staff as well, which was really helpful to just kind of get some additional information. My only additional question, I feel much more comfortable about all of it, just with the questions that were asked last time and even this presentation as well, you know, because people were worried, is this watering it down, is this gonna present a lesser academic path? And really, I don't see that at all, that all of the contents remains, it's just now different sequencing that allows for improved flexibility and a better pathway for every kid, and that's a win, so I think that looks great. My only question is with the implementation, this will be obviously a lot of extra work for our math faculty or staff, so what does that look like for them with the new content changes and certainly new books, curriculum, will they, and there's obviously a larger staff at West than at East, and how that works for division of sort of workload? Is that in, in, like, a plan in place for how that rolls out?
Absolutely, so what I started to do today, knowing that we were having this conversation tonight, and I know, like, we talk about a core resource that's gonna help kind of resequence those two courses, I started to put together a rubric today that we're gonna have a small group of our high school department leaders sit down, take a look at some of these core resources, use a rubric to review and vet three of these different resources, and then make that decision within the next three to four months. Then from there, we really start to do some high-impact professional development with these folks to make sure that these people that are gonna be teaching our year one course next year are ready to go and feel like they're supported throughout the end of the year and into summer. I think the other benefit that we also have, and I've mentioned this to some of our teams as we met, is with potential calendar that we're looking at for next year, and an addition of professional development days, more professional development days throughout the year, that gives more opportunity for our East and West staff, who are both teaching Math One, to make sure that they have touchpoints throughout the year on a more consistent basis as well.
Okay, great, that's great, thank you.
Other questions?
Does the new sequence for the upper grades, is that gonna change or affect, or are you gonna have the conversations of, you know, for four, five, six, seven? Does that change any of the math for the younger students?
It does not, no, so the, the way that the Wisconsin State Standards outline math instruction, K eight is very clear-cut as terms of, here are the standards that are taught in each of these grade levels. Once you get to high school, they're reorganized in the way that they're sorted by domains, necessarily, not by grade levels, which allow districts to choose whether they're gonna take an integrated, or I'm sorry, an integrated approach or algebra geometry approach. That's the reason why, as we talked about last week, districts, even though this has been out there, are sometimes slow to shift, because we talk about, how much does it cost, what's the stress that's based on staff to actually do this? In some of the, the articles and some of the research that was passed on, those were some of the reservations that when districts have taken a look at it before, have voiced are some of the primary concerns. I think in conversations with our department leaders and with the departments themselves, that while those reservations may be there, we have an opportunity to really push in a right direction, where we know that our team is on board and is ready to make this move, because we believe it's gonna be good for kids.
And that's fantastic, and last week I said, you know, I felt personally, thirty years ago, probably would have benefited myself even, so you guys had me sold last week, I'm just wondering, because of, because of this, and we already must have gifted and talented type accelerated classes for our fourth through seventh graders anyway, that would be identified and be able to be more advanced.
We, we do, yeah, throughout our elementary schools, if we go down to fourth grade, fifth like that, there are some students, and I've met with the GT team to talk about some of the ways that that grade level acceleration process happens, but also how there are smaller win groups that take place, where there may be three or four kids that are pulled out of a class, that are still taking a look at some higher level application of math, that absolutely happens.
Anything over here? No?
Back over here?
If not, Mr. Trowell?
No, I don't have anything else, the questions I had last week were answered, and in the week since then, the discussions I've had have just reinforced it, so, you know, I, I'm, thank you for allowing us to have another week, just so we could think about it and hear, but everything I heard was positive, so I think it's a good idea.
Well, good. With that, I'm seeking a motion to move or to implement the proposed high school math curriculum at the start of the twenty twenty-four school year.
Second.
Okay. Any follow-up questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
As the referendum funded, this is, this is gen item number five, as the referendum-funded facility improvements continue to develop, construction and budget updates will routinely be presented. Wasaw West, John Mear, Hawthorne Hills, and district-wide will be reviewed at this point in time. So, Mr. Vergood, if you want to take us to the first steps.
Thank you. So we have Nick Anderson and Russ Schumacher from Nexus joining us tonight to help talk through this. So I will turn it over to Nick.
Thank you. I know we've all met before, appreciate you having me here again. It's been a little while since we talked last, even though there may not be quite as many projects going on right now as there was probably last time we met, there's still a lot of construction taking place, and I'm sure everybody's been seeing everything happening at John Mear and West High School. So just a little update at where we're at, these slides are about a week old, so some, there's been some changes since then. So we'll start off with John Mear. We call it Area M, which is the second floor classroom on the northeast side of the building. For all intents and purposes, that addition is virtually complete. We started delivering FFNE there today, the furniture fixtures and equipment. Final stages, a little bit of trim work taking place, final cleaning, setting the furniture, and then, and then over the winter break, IT, and that'll be set up and if, the space will be ready to be used if the school chooses to use it. And moving on to the receiving and tech ed area, very similar situation there, we're in the final stages this week right now. The FFNE is also being delivered for there throughout winter break, that's gonna end up being handed over to the, the school as well. So things are going very well on both those additions. And then moving on to the music addition, so if people remember from the design process, basically the music addition wraps around the entire of the building and eventually it'll tie into the office addition. At this point, we're doing roughly half of that to allow the office to maintain function and for the front entrance to be used as is. So all the footing and foundation work has been completed for, I'll call it the half of the music addition. We had to cut a bunch of openings into the existing corridor from where the existing music space is. Those have been created. We needed to do that in order to be able to install the new wall that goes across there because it is, it's a firewall, so it's a little bit more, build one wall right next to the other. So there's actually spaces from the existing building into the new space right now. All the underground utilities have been installed, so as the masonry continues to go up and the steel and the roof deck is installed, we'll be able to install the, the concrete floor from there. And then roughly 15% of the load-bearing CMU is complete, that was as of last week, so there's been some work done on that. Main focus those last couple of weeks has been the other two additions that I was previously talking about. That's the update for John Mear. Eventually, we're gonna start working our way around the rest of the building, so roughly halfway out of the ground with the additions that are gonna be taking place and about 40% done with the remodel inside the existing space as we sit now. Oh, I'm sorry, a couple few, other few items for the John Mear, a couple other milestones. The boiler room has been completed. I know originally we got roughly half of the boiler room up and going, so we were able heat the pool right away in August. The other parts and pieces have since shown up, and the entire building is being heated with the new boiler room now. Site work, so on the north side of the building where the classroom and the receiving addition are, all of the concrete sidewalks and curb and gutter has been installed, underground utilities are complete. If anybody was noticing, there are some look like big giant culverts as you were driving by there. It's actually an underground retention system, so instead of having retention ponds on the property, it's a way to do it underneath the earth so you're not having wetlands exposed on your school property. And then the base course asphalt, generally when asphalt is installed, you do it in two layers. You do base course, which is a little bit of a heavier aggregate, not quite as smooth, and then you do a finish course or a wear course on top of that. We did install the base course so it could be used this winter, chose not to install the, the final course, and it was always planned this way because there's a lot of construction going on there yet, so we didn't want to risk ruining the final product until the majority of the heavy work is, is done in the area. Moving on to West High School, a lot taking place over there as well. The music room remodel, so that was the first interior space that we were gonna renovate. Fortunately, working with the school staff, we were allowed to work on this portion of the building during the school year, so we got started in mid-September. If anybody had been in that space before, that used to be a four-tiered system in the choir and the music rooms, you can see in the picture on there, now there is basically two different floor levels. So a lot of sand was brought in and then concrete poured on top of there to make it not only more ADA friendly, but also then it was, created a lot more usable space for the way that they're teaching in those classrooms now. So the, the slabs have all been poured, that was a big undertaking. The completed MEP rough-in, so once again, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, so all the either in the wall work or above the ceiling work, there was a little bit underground work, that's all taken place. The new masonry systems and sheet rock walls have all been installed. This, I would say we're probably at 95% of the painting complete as we sit here today. The hollow metal door frames were yet to be delivered, so that's really the only painting left in that area. As you can see in the picture, we've got the new ceiling grid installed throughout the classrooms in that area. The flooring, acoustical wall panels and ceiling fishes are ongoing. If I would've grabbed a picture from today, those rooms actually look quite a bit different than they do in that picture there. And then MEP finishes are ongoing. So our goal there is to hand this space over at the semester change, which I believe is January 15th, but we've got the FFNE for these spaces delivering coming in the second week of January, I want to say the Monday is January 8th. So actually getting really close, Wasaw West on the first phase of interior construction. And then moving on to the additions on the front, which is the front office addition and the auditorium addition, as I'm sure if you've driven by there, you can see that there's a, a lot going on. Created temporary barricades and check-in points. If you've gone into the school, they now have the main entrance over in the, the Commons Fieldhouse area there. Kind of the, the picture you can see is how we had to close off the existing check-in point because we had to cut out those concrete floors and enable, enable to install new footings and foundations in that area for the office addition. All the demolition has been completed and the site clearing, 40% of excavation, footing and foundation is complete, that number's probably a little bit closer to 55 as we sit today, and then 25% of footing installation is complete. Once again, that's probably sitting a little bit closer to 40% as today. So working our way around that addition, a lot going on, a lot yet to do. Next phase for remodeling will be once we hand over the music and choir area, we're gonna move into the auditorium and start renovating the auditorium space. And then, once again, we just talked a little bit about base course asphalt, so the new west parking lot, that was all extended to increased capacity, and then all the underground utilities, once again, underground retention system on that side of the building, that has all been installed, and we did install the base course of asphalt. We didn't do all the sidewalk and curb and gutter in this case because there's a lot of big traffic going over to build the new addition right now, but in order to have a nice working surface and parking service, we put the base course of asphalt down this fall. So, back one, I apologize.
One, one update we wanted to provide is, I believe a school board meeting or two ago, we're trying to be forward-thinking and obviously there was some plans, as you were looking through restructuring for the high schools, of adding a possible second and third floor to West. That, now that the restructuring has, has been modified, we went back to just keeping first floor, but we said, hey, is there anything that could be done to the building that could be less expensive now and avoid costs, future, higher costs in the future? One of the things was to push that entry out about 15 feet so we could get a bigger elevator lobby and also connect the second floor, future second floor corridor with the adjacent hallway. Well, a number got out there of 170,000, and I actually don't know where that came from, shouldn't have been communicated till we had the full picture, because basically that 170 would cover the footings and some of the concrete, but as we got our structural engineers involved, the, the connection to the adjacent roofing as well as the extensive roofing that's put on the second floor to accommodate the future, the cost is substantially higher. We're estimating it at $350,000 now to add that additional 15 feet. This work can be done in the future. It can be, it'll be more expensive in the future and a little invasive going into the adjacent spaces, but for that dollar amount at this point, we wanted to bring it to the board to see if you wanted to reconsider moving forward with that approach.
Say that again.
Yeah, so if we're not going to add the second and third floors, and right now we have no plans to, to merge, we had talked earlier about adding the footings or the, the structure needed to add an elevator. We had talked about a number of 170,000, that number's actually 350,000. We're guessing that maybe the board does not want to take that on at that cost, but so that, that's what we're bringing to you tonight.
It's a good guess for, for me, anyway. I, I think that until we, or unless or until we have a plan that consolidates elementary schools, we don't have any leftover funds. So while it may be nice to spend $365,000 now to maybe save money in the future, we don't know if that spending's ever even gonna happen. There, there may never be a second, third floor on there, and so as that cost gets higher and higher to higher, to future-proof something that might never happen, it's, it pushes me now to think that we shouldn't do it.
Where are you, where are we at with those front footings and things?
There's no construction that's been done in that area because we wanted to make sure we had all the costs in before we, before we would move forward. So no construction costs have been encumbered in that area. We've stayed away from that area but need direction today so we can keep going tomorrow one way or the other.
So we, we wouldn't do any footings work to create any kind of elevator pit? We would just?
Correct.
Go back to the, the original plan and?
The original plan, and in the future?
Emergency exit comes out there and the, the front entry just goes in square?
That's correct.
The, the spaces there that we would intrude into it later?
That's correct, and so you'd have to go into the adjacent spaces, but you could choose to put the elevator somewhere else so that the, so you would have room, you know, to be able for circulation in the future. And things being unknown, you know, we, we would recommend not moving forward, especially at the increased cost, but we, that's why we wanted to bring it to you tonight.
Well, I tend to lean that way as well because we do not, with the proposal that has been put forward at this point in time, three weeks ago, there is no plan at this point in time going into the future. So consequently, I don't think we should take out our crystal ball and start saying, well, you never know. I would say on the conservative side.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with, with both of you at this point, but what has come out of the prior discussions over the months is that West needs four science labs. So at some point, we'll be doing it, but for us to, to dedicate money out of the referendum money when everything else has been going over budget, doesn't, doesn't work right now. So I would have to go along with stopping it and going back to the original plan for that area.
Any other comments from the left?
I agree with that too, and while we do know that about the science labs, that wasn't a part of the original referendum work, so I just think that's kind of a, yeah.
One of the things, we know that there's been real fluid conversations and quasi-decisions over time. I wonder, would the board be comfortable taking action to that effect, just to say, you know, make a motion to not, how would you want it phrased? Not?
Not moving forward with changing the design to accommodate the elevator lobby.
Did we make a motion on the 170?
Yeah, Karen had kind of on the fly created a motion about, about, about putting the elevator in, that infrastructure?
Yeah. Cassie?
Unfortunately, we're not noticed for action on this item.
Are we not?
That would be out of, okay.
So we'll take, we'll take action probably at the next meeting. I would recommend not doing any of that work while we wait for the next meeting.
January 8th, we can?
We get a thumbs up?
At this point in time, we can give you a thumbs up.
So we're comfortable moving forward, not moving forward?
Perfect, right. Yep. Thank you. Good catch.
Thank you for putting us back into order, Cassie. Appreciate that.
She does that all the time.
All right. Next item?
We're still going on.
That's why I'm looking at you right now.
Shift of the team.
Next is Hawthorne Hills, right?
Yep.
So at the left?
Oh, sorry.
A couple board meetings ago, the board had requested an update on what was in the Hawthorne Hills site work as a result of an updated estimate being shared with you. So this is just the response to what is in that Hawthorne Hills site work. So we have Sharon Gould from Nexus here to walk us through that.
Excellent. Well, so you can see this Hawthorne Hills site work slide on the screen, and just to run through the color coding a little bit, the gray is an existing road, the pink is the new road and modifications that are required to go along with that new road, the blue is the building, and the green is an extended parking lot. Just to touch through, the road is part of the base referendum scope, the extended parking lot is also part of the referendum scope, but what was removed during design was a pickup and drop-off because they, the school is using pickup and drop-off with the buses with a different function. So with, and we also had some concrete work, sidewalks, curb and gutter repairs, things like that. So as you might be well aware, the budget has changed significantly higher than what was carried in the referendum scope, and some of the factors that affected that is when you look at the pink road, this, we worked with the city to get it, you know, to make meet all the needs to have that road work, and you can see that there's an extension along Kick Bush on the south side of the project that's significantly longer than what was expected. It's required to tie into the road. You can see some of the, there's like parking lot access to a city park just to the south, so that needed to be adjusted. So that whole slice along that bottom side of the slide is extended roadwork. The other half of the road changes too, is we did put curb and gutter and sidewalk along the whole length of the road. If you look at the drawing, it's towards the east side of the, that did require the roadbed to be a little bit wider, did expand the earthwork needed to get that road in, so that also contributed to the cost increase of that total scope of work. And other things that we needed to do to accommodate is underground stormwater retention. Nick actually mentioned earlier that there's other places we do that, that was not anticipated here, but just based on where the road and the city lot lines and everything worked. There is two sections of stormwater retention that's going under the road, and then the final piece is there is some wetlands that was discovered during design that we had to mitigate, and that also has a cost impact to the total project. So just giving you all a quick update on why that package is so different than what you anticipated.
Sorry, Sharon, I want to make sure people understand, the, the, the stormwater and the wetland and the city request, the sidewalk and gutter and the extension, those were all, were those all requested by the city?
Yes.
And those are all add-ons?
They were all add-ons, and we didn't make with the city early on, and none of those items were brought up. And also, the, the actual soils underneath the road, which you really don't know what they are until you do soil borings, and they drill 25 feet deep in multiple locations, found to be pretty rough to actually build on, so that contributed to, to our estimate going up frankly a million dollars, you know, for that, for that road that wraps around, so.
We're building it, we're building it, okay, first question, is this whole road on school property?
Yes.
Yes.
Is this is all the way to eat?
Yes, yeah, the land be, above, on this, on this drawing, the land above Hawthorne Hills was donated to us five years ago.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that is because, the only reason you're doing all this, and if I'm getting in the weeds too far, tell me to stop, okay? The reason you're doing this is because that's what the city wants, because you're gonna turn it over to the city for maintenance, so they're forcing us to do all this stuff. If it's all on our land and we want a road, that'd be the question. It's all on our land, and if we maintained it, we don't have to do any of that, lot less of it, lot less of it, right? If we're gonna be the ones supplying and maintaining, if we're gonna use it as an alternate driveway, then alls we have to do is meet city requirements at Washington Street and down here maybe on Kick Bush where we tie into it. If we can tie the bottom end into our parking lot, we don't even have to do that, we'd only be on Washington Street.
You mean as far as not doing the whole upper wraparound but doing some of the?
Well, you could do, you could do the whole wraparound, but I don't have to put all the side, the curb and gutter in and the sidewalk necessarily, because it's our driveway.
Just so I understand, what you're asking is instead of doing the road design to the city's requirements and turning it over to the city when the work is complete, keeping it within the school district and not having it turn over to the city, the school district would maintain it. I'm just trying to?
That is correct. That is correct.
And, and so that way you're suggesting that potentially we could not bring it all the way up to the city standards for some of those areas?
Right. We would just have to meet the, the, any wetland stuff, because that's different, nothing to the city, right? And just make it a decent road, right, to handle the traffic that we would have on it as a school driveway.
Maybe, well, this, we might have to deal with the stormwater as well.
And the only reason I'm bringing that up is, is suggesting an option if this is deemed necessary for whatever that facility ends up being.
We would have to meet with them and check into that. You know, we still have to deal with the soil conditions. We still have to deal with the stormwater, the wetlands. So we might be able to avoid some curb and gutter and some things like that.
And maybe some of the extension on the south side of the lot too, if we tie into the road correctly.
Just some, just bringing it up.
Now, looking at this the first time a couple of weeks ago, I was wondering, why are we doing everything that the city should be doing?
Because municipalities do-
I understand that that's a rhetorical question as I lead into my next question is that, as, as we're trying to put our money towards the education of students, I have a hard time following up with what city demands are when this is going to benefit the city as well. Then it should be them coming in and taking care of some help here versus expecting us taking money that's going to be put towards the education of students. Now we're putting it into a road for Wausau. And then I think of our 11 other communities that are sitting here thinking, well, then Wausau City is getting the benefit of my taxpayer dollar coming from that area. What am I getting out of it? So it's kind of a whole domino effect here by the city of Wausau coming in and telling us that we have to add this, that, and whatever. So I, I bring that up piggybacking on what you're talking about, Corey.
Absolutely.
Has any work been done on, so, I guess-
Just the building stuff, the, the first phase Hawthorne, the stuff in the building, the generator, but nothing in green or pink has been done yet?
Okay. I guess I ask it because I thought, I was under the impression that based on the cost of this thing, it's, we weren't going to do it, you know, it just, I agree, Jim, that we can do a lot better things with that money. I know that that's, it's a need, but for that cost, that's-
Ridiculous.
Yeah.
Well, if, if we keep the building what it is-
There are other things that can be done in the front to help with traffic flow and, you know, beyond putting this ridiculous-
If the use of the building changes where the traffic need changes, we might, that would be a reason not to do it whatsoever besides the $3 million cost instead of the 1.9. So I agree. We, we can do something better with it, but we need to figure out what we're going to have that building used for first, I guess.
And that's our intent is to bring, bring up what's left to be done for you all to talk about and help give us direction that might fold into future conversations we're going to have shortly on budget updates.
So I've got two, two questions on this. One is the question I asked at the last meeting, which was, when we looked at our budget, we talked about what the budget looks like if we don't do any exterior work. And my question was, but the referendum had more exterior work than just the road.
Right.
So what, do we have any breakdown of what the other exterior work would be and, and why would we be taking that off of the plan?
And, and we can come up with that, like maybe do the parking lot for increased parking and maybe segment into this, this, this work into a few different segments. We can definitely pull that together.
Well, yeah, I was asking because it sounded like the road was probably not going to happen because of the expense. I mean, we haven't decided that, but everybody's kind of just come to that realization, I think, over the course of the months. But it went from that to not doing any exterior work at all. And so I was wondering why that happened.
And by exterior, you ran some, so you, you mean like site work, parking lots?
Any site, right.
Yeah.
Why would all of that be taken off the table?
Yeah. And that's what we, we'd like to, to discuss with you tonight so we can get an accurate cost. That green area, that was the, the parking lot area. And I, frankly, I can't recall the reason that was added in, but is, is, could we do the parking lot and not do the road?
Absolutely.
Yes? Okay. And, and we don't have a cost for that though tonight, correct?
Not tonight, but, you know, I don't want to give, I want to make sure we have time to delineate that. But it is kind of the tail wagging the dog, so it's a, it's a, it's a percentage of that, obviously. The major cost is the road. But I can split it out into the concrete repairs, the parking lot, and then the road. We'll get that split out for you.
And then, thank you. And then my second question is, the reason this road was, was thought of in the first place is because it is kind of a problem there with traffic, because it just sort of ends. Is there anything else that could be done differently that we say, okay, this isn't as good as having that road, but there's maybe something else we could do that would be closer in cost to what the original referendum scope was? Whether it's a turnaround or something, I don't know. This is so far out of my expertise. I don't know what that would be, but I mean, maybe we have to realize, okay, we, we can't get the, the great thing we thought, but is there something else that would at least help?
Yep.
That costs $500,000 instead of $3.5 million or something, I mean, something?
Keith, maybe you can, um, work with them, approach the landowner to the south? Maybe-
The south is a park?
Well, at that end, right, at the east end?
Oh.
But there is a field.
Further, further west.
Yeah, a little more west, right, until 13th?
Yeah.
I think that is. You know, maybe? Just outside the box, right, guys?
What we can do, not only increase the parking lot, increase parking, but also turn around without going all the way up and around.
And, and I don't mean to say that I think that we definitely have to do all the exterior, all the site work. I just wanted to know why we're taking that off. So if there's a reason to not do it, then that-
Right.
Then tell us that.
Right.
Come back with that more delineated.
Good.
And I think this is the first time we've fully shared all of this information with you, just to make sure that we're, you see what's all part of that scope.
Before we either move on or don't move on.
Correct.
Perfect.
Greatly appreciated by doing that. Thank you. All right.
Good.
So at the same meeting where it was requested to look at the Hawthorne site work, the board requested to dig a little deeper of what was in the district-wide technology and FFNE budget. So it's that 8.6 million dollar line item you see on the top of the budget breakdown when we look at it every month. And I broke it down for you. The first three lines are what's in there. So we have $212,000 for a owner discretionary fund, covering whatever we need to, within the referendum. $3.8 million to improve classroom technology, displays, access points, devices, and everything that supports that. And then about 4.5 million for replacing 30% of existing furniture within the district. And I think it's important to be clear on this. It is 30% of the classroom furniture in classrooms that don't get any new furniture from the referendum. So in total, that's 8.6 million dollars allocated to date. To date, the only thing we've spent out of there is about $438,000 for BenQ boards within classrooms. And then the bottom part is just remaining budgets. You can see there's about $8.2 million left in there. Any questions on all of that? I don't have a question, but more of a comment as we get towards the end of referendum planning. You know, I think I'm going to have to rely a lot on you to tell us, or tell me at least, that this, this change to the remodeling of the school is more or less important to learning than that furniture is. Because some of that might be so horrible that that's just a dire need. And some of it might just be kind of nice. And having this room would actually be way more important. So, you know, I'm not, we're not going to go in and start inspecting all the furniture in every room. We, we need you to be telling us that along the way.
One of my questions with regard to the classroom technology piece is, in some of the math curriculum conversations I had, we, there was also some side conversations kind of regarding technology application that's already kind of needs because of the way their teaching has been developed with, I don't know if it's instructional videos and course content, et cetera, that then is or is not supported by BenQ boards. And I mean, maybe you guys have heard about some of that. And so I'm just wondering if we're removing any of tho, any of that funding or it's not available, how does that impact our staff with regard to workload and having to change things? Is there any of that? I mean, I didn't take notes in the middle of that conversation. Maybe Mr. Uding would have a better idea about what, like, I maybe heard about some of the, the supportive lectures, coursework, content, stuff with, I don't know if it's with infinite campus and things being in Canvas and the way it's supported by BenQ boards, et cetera. It's totally outside of my understanding, but-
Right.
I'm wondering-
I think there's a lot of different aspects of things that staff are working on and some of the changes that are being implemented wrapped into that.
Okay.
The, the current, to my knowledge, the current curriculum's function on the BenQ boards is not a conflict with that. So I, I want to, I, I, we're, we're, I think we're talking two different things with regards to this money.
Okay.
The vast majority of that money would go to classroom-based technologies, labs, things like that in the secondary schools.
Okay, okay.
And plus with that, John, it's a continued turnover of IT. It's a continual update with IT. And I'm talking about the tools in the classroom that teachers are going to be utilizing. That's just something they need in order, and it's not a want, but it's a need so that they can instruct at the best way possible so that our students understand what's going on, where it all implements and comes together with the devices that our students have too.
Right. We're looking at about a five-year replacement, second for instructional devices, and then five to seven years depending on end of life and vendors for access point switches and things like that. But yes, there's a plan, there's a, there's a planned Windows device replacement coming up that that money would be allocated for.
It's the hardware update, software update, the integration update, the interactive monitors versus the interactive whiteboards and, which are more intuitive, which makes it easier for our teachers to implement that than having to do some of the older stuff that we were doing. So it's an update.
It's just that, from some of the feedback I was getting is every time we change, you know, the new system doesn't support all of the work that's maybe been established. So then it needs to kind of be redone.
Well, I don't want to be, I don't want to be crude, I don't want to be crude about it, but the bottom line is change is change.
Yeah, yeah.
Change has to happen when you move from one integrated software and hardware in order to move forward. So just as long as it's needed, I think that is the biggest point. As long as it's needed as we move forward. Because we're looking at what we can do to narrow back so we can place money where it belongs instead of just the wants. Okay, anything else?
So Sharon will come back up here. So if there's nothing else on the FFNE and technology, we wanted to provide an updated timeline to the board and for all the remaining projects. So Nexus put this together with existing and then updated timelines. So Sharon Gould is up here to help us talk through that.
Hello again. So I'm just going to run through the Gantt chart. Let me know if you have any questions or comments. I'm pretty sure you're all familiar with these charts, so I'm not going to define how it's set up. But what we looked at is the original referendum Gantt chart with the schedule and where we are today. And then when I'm done, we can talk about questions on why or what, why not some things have changed. So if you look at Hawthorne Hills, on the top row, you can see the original scope, the work's been completed. And then we did break out the site work. We're being more clear in the name of that. So it's road and the parking, so there's more to it. And that's, you can see that if we were to move forward on the road, we would start design again in January. It would take a couple of months because we do have to go through approvals, the city approvals, DNR, and we would just look at it for a summer construction. Again, that's just where we stand today. The next item on, sure.
Would you mind just explaining the different colors?
Oh, sure. So the question was to explain the different colors. So the lighter colors is the original. The light blue versus the dark blue is design. The light orange versus dark orange is bidding. The light green versus dark green, the darker set, is construction. And then that final yellowish-green is commissioning or post-construction activities. So-
So the lines, the, the light lines on the top were the original schedule and then the dark lines below are the adjusted schedule, correct?
Correct. So, makes sense? Okay. All right. So the next item on the list that we have outstanding is the West multipurpose athletic field, the turf field. So that was originally shown as part of the other package, but for several different reasons, we held off on designing that, looking for feedback, one on the type of field, the location, things like that. And if we got that feedback pretty quickly, we still could get that into design this, starting this winter for summer construction. Again, we would need to know the location of that field as soon as possible. And then, you know, that one's probably the biggest risk on slipping into a, a future year, just because we have to go through the whole design cycle and the lead times of turf and the impact of the usage of the field in the fall.
So, so by, like, we would need to know where it goes, like, in the next week, to be honest with you, in order to get the turf on order. And the, one of the reasons we did hold off is kind of, as you were looking at that possible indoor athletic complex, as well as some of the restructuring, what fields go where. That's why that was put there. That's why that was put there. But if we don't have direction of where that field wants to be, we'll just slip that into 2025.
Yeah. I want it pushed off. I just want to voice that because I don't, I think there's things that need to happen at less than some redesign for the future. So.
And to build on what Corey and Russ were saying is, it was held off to be able to make thoughtful decisions on where that field needs to go and what it wants to be. So the next item is Horace Mann. So we did update the schedule to add Montessori back into Horace Mann. We'd get started in design in January. That would run out for the next five to six months. We'd bid it early summer. And then we'd start with fall construction, pushing hard for a fall of 2025 opening, according to Montessori's schedule. There's some impacts there. We'll work out with the building, mainly just site coordination. But we believe that that schedule with what we heard last time, we can get forward and nail it.
And the completion date, just from before and after, is only about a month. So-
Right.
Not a huge adjustment there. It's just design got started a little later.
Right. And the rest of Horace Mann is already completed. So we would just add on, and it would go out as one bid package and not separate, just a streamlining cost, benefit, those types of things. So the next item is East High School. There's a little bit of delay in design there due to just some of the changes with the scope. Right now, we're just getting started with putting EEA and WAVE, potentially their secure front entry and some office work in there. So we'll get that one back on schedule to bid out in the winter and, you know, for summer construction moving forward.
Completion date is unaffected though.
Correct.
The construction completion date is unaffected.
Yep. So the next grouping is, we are working on GD Jones, Jefferson, and Marshall right now. We do have a 50% update that's coming in after that. You can see that that design slipped a little bit. Again, you know, a lot of that was coordination, making sure that we're focusing on the correct schools. But again, that didn't affect the construction cycle moving forward. And if you're curious on why the split was there originally in construction, that was just to do some interior prep work to be able to receive the full construction schedule, maybe if there is asbestos or something in the building. But we don't believe that we need to be in, do any work in there during spring break. The next item is Grant. So if we're going back to the referendum scope of work, to be able to get Grant, actually, let me take a step back. For John Marshall, the reason why there's a second grouping in the following summer is generators still have a really long lead time.
About a year.
About a year. So that would be the generator work over at Marshall. So back to Grant, to get it done for next summer, summer of 2025, we would get started in design. It's an addition and a few other things that go into that school. We would get started in maybe mid-summer to go through the design- We would get started in maybe mid-summer to go through the design phase. There's a little bit of flexibility there, but there's also, I believe, a generator on that package, so we have to have enough time to get the generator set, go out for, you know, an equipment package so it could go in in summer of 2025.
A question on the timing for some of these elementary schools. How long are we allowed to wait with, from, from a referendum legality standpoint? Like, how, how long can we put? The reason I ask, the elephant in the room, I'll be the bad guy and point out, the Grant one is two-plus million dollars to a school that we can constantly look at closing. John Marshall isn't very expensive in the grand scheme of things, but it's over half million dollars to a hundred-year-old school that we've identified, probably $10 million of upgrades that need to be done to it. Like, I know we can't wait forever, but how, how long can we wait for some of these schools that could still be in the discussion of consolidation?
So the, the restrictions, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Vigu, but the restrictions on referendum spending are when you borrow the money. We've borrowed the money. We should be able to hold that in, with enough time for the board to make some decisions about elementary schools. The, the, the cost, of course, is the inflationary cost. But if the board needed, I'll just throw out a number, a year, right, to make a plan and do some changes, we could, in terms of the referendum financing, that would be allowable.
I agree with you, Lance. To spend money on some of these elementaries, to put a secure entrance or, you know, the one at Grant is obviously quite extensive, would be a waste if we go back and ultimately do some consolidation. I'd feel really bad about doing work that, to a school that's going to be consolidated. So something has to be figured out and done.
Right, if we, if we put two and a half million dollars into Grant and sell it for $500,000 or three years later.
Or less.
You know? And, and on the other hand, the opposite side of that is if we wait two or three years and then do it and it costs more, so we can't do as much as we could have otherwise, you know, that's bad too, so it's.
But Lance, you are, you are not playing the bad guy. You are playing the person that needs to ask these questions because these are questions that need to be asked at this point in time because we have taken a pause, we have taken a, a stop to take a look at things. We still want to bring in a consultant, we still want to bring in a demographer, we still want to take a look at how we can do these things. And for us to move forward so quickly to finish by the end of 2024 in some of these elementary schools, these questions have to be asked. There is no plan at this point in time. There is only a pause plan that's put into place. And so I think we need to be very specific in what we're looking at, and I don't, and I, I believe this might be where the board is, we don't want to be go flying forward, just throw money into this, because our taxpayers are going to come back to us and say, wait a minute, why did you do that? They are already asking, why are we slowing down? Many are. So we need to take a good, close look at this, and I, I was vehement about it before, I'm going to be vehement about it now. We need to slow down, but we need to have some specifics because something's got to be done. Our numbers are going down, and if we don't start taking a look at our numbers with a demographer, and if we want to bring in that consultant, we need to make sure that we bring in a consultant to help guide us in our strategic plan and what we're going to be doing going into the future. So I, I agree, you're not the bad guy. You're the guy that's making the question.
And send you the calls then.
And we have flexibility, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, as your partner, read and react to however slow or quickly you move. We consciously push those ones at the bottom further out. If John Marshall wants to push itself out, we can do that as well. You just let, have to let us know which ones we can move forward to from a, we've been focusing on ones that affect kind of secure entrances and things that will just make the, the space more secure. Those are kind of the ones that we've been focusing on the first time. But Sharon will give you an update on the 50%, 50% here in just a little bit, but it also can fold into some of the budget updates, and we can continue to just update those based on how quickly or slowly you move on some of this, these items.
I have a question, not on elementaries, but Sharon mentioned about WAVE and EA or EEA, excuse me, at East with their own entrance. Can you remind me of the conversation of, like, how we decided that was like the best spot for them?
Sure.
And why we would, you know, add that to the building, that's all.
So EEA has always been located at East, and one of our security concerns frankly has been the, the lack of a secure entrance. So that was something we wanted to put in from the beginning. And, and we had talked about as if East was going to become a junior high school, we would look for another site for EEA, but now that it's going to remain as it is, we want to leave it there, and we're going to, to bring WAVE and EEA together in the same physical site because we think they can really accentuate each other, and we have one principle, it's overseeing both of those. So that's why we would, that's why we'd look at it there.
And that was part of the original referendum scope?
Correct.
The entrance?
Correct.
The secure entrance, that was part of the original referendum scope?
Any other questions on any of the timeline stuff? Cassie, do you mind?
I think you hit all the questions.
Now, just to, to keep it in mind, so right now Nexus is, is halfway through designing three of our elementaries, and you're going to see those in just a moment. So again, if, if there needs to be a pause, we'll just need to know that. Oh yeah, that's right, thank you.
Perfect, so dive into the budget. I wanted to show you kind of what we've been looking at the last couple of months where we sat after the West bid. The one difference with this number is that in the, near the bottom there, I added the West Community Room and Bleacher Storage. I received the feedback that that was in the initial scope, so I wanted to include it in the budget that we're looking at. So if you take all this currently where we sit, we're looking at about 1.3 million under budget, under resources. That's without any updates to estimates. That is not updating the Hawthorne Hills site work estimate, that is with Montessori still at Lincoln. So just all of those things kind of before, where did we sit before all this changed? The one update that's current in here is the Horace Mann Middle School, 7.7 million dollar design update, so that is the one.
No Grant, right?
Ah, right, and no Grant, so thank you for reminding me, no Grant in here. So just running through that again, what are the factors that are impacting the updated budget? Montessori at Horace Mann Middle School instead of Lincoln Elementary. The one we're about to see does include Grant Elementary work. Original Lincoln Elementary scope is also included. I think there was about $214,000 in there for that. And then we've talked about this already, but the bid has been pulled back for Horace Mann. Those were out to bid, but with the feedback of getting Montessori back in Horace Mann, that's been pulled to bid as one project. And then what you'll look at in a second here is that the estimates have been updated on all remaining projects. So Nexus went through and did that for us, and Russ will talk about that more now.
Yeah, thanks. I was actually in process of it when, you know, the board had, had requested this and very wisely requested it because we bid out 78% of the work at this point, call it 80%. We got 20% to go. We wanted to take a deep breath after the restructuring dust had settled and said, hey, where are we at kind of moving forward and where are things at? So what is it, what I did is I, is I took a look back at where some of the other projects had run dollars per square foot, you know, some of the South Mountains, Stettin, things like that, kind of applied those to some of the work we have going on, as well as looked at indicators. You know, obviously, we use a cost index that, you know, most people do in construction. Mortenson puts it out, and everybody's working against a 30% cost increase over the last couple of years, and we still have, we are still between the ditches here. We still, we've bid out nine projects, five of them have been within budget. The bigger ones, a few of them did, did roll over, but all within kind of the guidelines of, of, of the process. And some of the neighboring districts, you know, if, if you read the newspapers, they've been coming in $14 million over on Nina, Appleton Library, $13 million, which was 35% more than they had budgeted. Appleton added $30 million to their $100 million budget before they went out to referendum. And Ash, Ashkosh just bid a, a middle school that came in, 4.6 million over budget just on one building. So we're not in that situation here, and we're very proud of that, that we're able to keep focused and, and keep things, the scopes fairly contained on these things and get, get very, very good bid coverage. But what we did go through is all of them, and we updated the budgets internally, had them reviewed internally for stuff that we aren't comfortable budgeting a day-to-day. We, we have a third party that we hire and bring in and look at it for some of the site stuff, and they've been budgeting things pretty closely all the way along here for your projects. So those have all been updated, and it does show an increase of, call it $4 million. Doesn't take into account any of the interest earnings at this point, but 4 million over, and call that about, what is that, about 13, 12, 13% over the, the, the original project budget from this point on. And that does include obviously the Hawthorne Hills site work and Horace Mann, the Montessori there, and all of the other projects as well.
Any questions on these updated numbers?
How come we have two things with Horace Mann and Montessori? Explain that, please.
Well, Horace Mann Middle School without Montessori, and then add the Montessori component to it. So those two combined, before, Montessori was a zero, and that was, we added cost to Lincoln. Now they're the two components for the Montessori and, and the, the rest of the remodeling.
So just using that one again as an example, what you're saying is, so the original project budget for Montessori was $5 million. You're thinking that your estimate now, if we were to do the exact same thing that was in the original scope, would be more like 5.6?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and kind of how it's actually kind of almost scoped now by walking it through with the teachers there, so updated to how we intend to proceed.
And so knowing that, as we move along, we need to reduce the scope of the original referendum plans so that they aren't all 10 or 14% over, making us run out of money by the time we get to the end.
Yeah, yeah, there's a few paths forward that Josh will talk about, but what's really key for us on, on the design side at this point with Sharon and her team is not let the scope increase beyond the original referendum scope, and then we'll continue to do estimates throughout that process and bring them to you like we have in the past. But we can't let, what, what I, what I've told the team is, we're not going to be adding even an additional door to these spaces without you, you all being involved so that we can keep a tight grip on, on the scope, so that we can bring, bring stuff in, hopefully that or below. I've hopefully built conservative budgets here, but that's contingent on the scope staying where, what was originally.
Or, and I should say, another alternative is, or you come back to us and say, the original scope is so important that we don't want to reduce it at all, it's more important than the FFNE, we need to pull some out of the FFNE so that we don't have to reduce that scope.
Correct, correct. So we'll have a very tight eye on it moving forward, and we want to get some of these big rocks bid out again, you know, Horace Mann, West, well, we'll wait with West, but East, some of those big multimillion-dollar projects, we have to get bid out to see where things land and then figure out, that'll give you time to figure out with the elementaries and then roll into what we need to there.
Any additional questions on these numbers specifically?
Okay. So then I took all those factors we talked about, all these factors, along with the updated estimates, and rolled it into what would our budget look like today? So you can see all those numbers in yellow have been updated to the current estimates, and the other numbers, projects that have been built, bid or completed, they stayed the same. So what we're looking at instead of 1.3 million dollars under budget, we're looking at about 5.6 million dollars over budget. Currently with those updated estimates and moving everything back to kind of that original scope that we talked about. So this does include the work at Grant. This includes the $5 million, the updated amount for the $5 million at Montessori. It includes the Lincoln Elementary work. All of those things have been moved back into this budget.
So it's about four and a half percent over the, the funding source.
Thank you for creating that, that was exactly what we asked for so that we could see that. It's going to help us as we make our decisions along the way.
Do you have any additional questions on this? So what are some mitigation efforts? We've talked a lot tonight about the elimination of the road at Hawthorne Hills or the exploration of, of what, what site work could we do under the budget? To not build the Community Room at Wausau West, we've, we've not moved forward with that alternative bid. I know it was discussed as part of the original scope, but it was bid as an alternate, so so far we have not moved forward with that. What was touched on earlier about leveraging available funds from district-wide FFNE and technology, and exactly as was mentioned, the potential adjustment of scope going forward to fit within the project budget. Any questions on any of that?
If I could just, could you back up one slide, please? So we mentioned this earlier, so if, if the board would decide to close some schools, obviously that would be part of that mitigation as well. If we, if we eliminated costs at any schools that we would close, so that would be a fifth option.
So the Community Room at West was one of the reasons why we asked for that breakdown?
Right.
Because we were kind of talking about that, and one of the things I said is, you know, West is already over. If we go even far, I mean, are we going to run out of money? What's the timeline on when that could actually be? I mean, it could be done anytime, it could be done 10 years from now, but I mean, is there a timeline of, of when we should try to make a decision on that?
Yeah, we asked also if the bid that we got as an alternate, if that price was still good.
So I don't want to speak for Nick, but we, you know, we could do the work at any time, we just run the risk of the price increasing and then.
I can speak up a little bit. I did reach out to all the contractors that were affected by this alternative. There's been some very insignificant cost increases, something that's going to be the, the needle to say on the number that was provided, so as we sit right now, asking contractors, if we decide to do this work next summer, what does that look like financially? Very little impact. If you say, all right, let's sit tight for another year, maybe we'll do it the year after, I wouldn't expect necessarily to get the same answer. I would think at that point, contractors are going to be demobilized, they're not going to be out on the site, they're not going to be in the area. You would see an additional increase.
So this is work that would be done next summer, so us making a decision in three or four months isn't much different than us making a decision in a couple of weeks? Does it make much difference?
Yeah, I would say probably by the end of February, the real estate goal, you know, the parts and pieces that would need to get ordered, you know, it sounds crazy, but you can make an area and brick and, and roofing supplies now, we could get on board, we can give it up nice for that, but by the end of February, your decision was getting that to get contractors plenty of time.
And I, I just wanted to clarify, it says Community Room, and we keep saying, I keep saying Community Room, but this is the Community Room and the addition to the Field House, all rolled into one package, just for anyone who's following along.
I'm not speaking for any of the board members, but for myself, it would be helpful if, if administration believes that that Community Room and storage is really important, I think it's important, but if you could come back to us with, here's an example of some FFNE that, that we think is not as important as that. Like, identify it, don't, not just, we're just going to take a million and a half off of it, but like, what does that mean if you take a million and a half off of the FFNE? What do we, what's, you know, give us some examples. Again, I don't want to tour all the rooms and look at all the furniture, but if, if you believe it's that important and it's more important than the FFNE money, then show us that, and, you know, I might be in a better position then to decide.
Sure.
I think it's going to be imperative to come back to the administration and identify what is a need and what's not. My follow-up question with, with what Lance is talking about, I've had a concern about the number of people bidding for all these positions. Are we getting enough bids coming in? We're, we're getting enough people to, that are interested, that can handle the size of the, the, the build that we have?
We've got great bid coverage on West, and that's one of the things we're doing with the smaller schools too, is combining them so there's enough mass there to interest contractors. And we've got multiple of those elementary schools. We've been getting really good bid interest on these projects.
Could, just along that point, I don't know if we emphasized that. Cassie, can you go back to that Gantt chart real quick? Oh, is that on the other project? Never mind. So you may have noticed that we did three elementaries, and then Grant was alone, and then five elementaries. So I don't know if this makes sense to everybody, but, so we would bid three elementaries together. So if I'm a contractor now, I, I've got enough work to make it worth my while. Grant's already big enough, it's. work to make it worth my while. Grant's already big enough, it's 2 million, that's big enough, and then those five. So that's what we were talking, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And what we can do on that FFNE is we can bring the person in from Texas that does all of our FFNE along with somebody from the district. We can just walk all the schools and let's just do a methodical way of deciding which, which needs it and which don't. We'll take that on.
That community room in the storage area, was that something that was added after the fact with the anticipation that the two high schools would be merging and that additional space would be needed?
It was always part of it, it's just when we talked about it, it was like $500,000, not 1.5 million. And we were also going over budget. So it's just, it's part of the original discussion, it's just, everything's been getting so expensive with inflation.
In the design process, you know, a community room can be a community room or it can be used, you know, even beyond that. And in this case here, it was originally just a community room in, in addition, but the thought was to use it for dance and use it for cheerleading, almost like a multipurpose room. So they wanted some higher ceilings so it could get more use. And that, that pushed it to a storage room by the gym, which had the height, and then that meant, storage has to be added on for the gym. So it was just a little bit of a domino effect, to make it as mu, as useful as possible.
Besides.
Getting those bleachers out of there would be.
Yeah, in.
Would be good.
You're totally right, Lance. It, it needs to happen. And what you're suggesting and the data they'll bring back to us is, is one path. You know, the other path is going to be achieved by um, could be by looking at the elementary schools, because the grant funding may change, may completely eliminate the majority of that road number, right? And that nearly wipes out the, the, the 5.6, right? Just between the two projects.
Right, but that decision we wouldn't have by February.
Nope.
Is my guess. So that's why I was.
No, because, because FFNE is going to be a secured funding solution, absolutely.
Just to simplify for my brain on this, um, we're over 5.6.
4.5, yeah, four and a half percent, 5.6 million.
Okay. And so now we're looking, obviously, just to respond to that overage by one of these four column, you know, options, those mitigation efforts.
Or maybe more than one of four, maybe it's a combination.
Sure. What would be helpful for me a lot, like, to see when I'm looking at these efforts, is actually a number of what each of those things are as I stare at them. So I know, okay, well, the road at Hawthorne Hills is, are we talking about that being 3 point?
3 something.
Something, right there. And then the community room is 1.5. And FFNE is 8 something. Okay. It would just be helpful for me to see what those are, and I, roughly, and especially because we're not going to necessarily take all of any num, one of those sections. But just as I look at it, no, okay, I need to find 5.6 million in this area or with the elementary options, because just staring at these blocks look to me like, I, those numbers don't.
The exact same thing you do.
Okay.
So that's what we'll be putting together. It's almost kind of a list of those items that we can check and uncheck and kind of work through on what makes sense. And I echo what Karen's saying, same thing that Lance has said too, you know, we kind of need from administration telling us what is important for the advancement of the education for the, for the, for the kids in this district and what are, because I'm talking about adjustment of scope on these remaining projects, right? Um, what is the ultimate importance that's going to help benefit their education versus what are the things that we can maybe be, you know, avoid? And then also, obviously, the, the schools, you know, are we going to, what are we going to do with that? But that's what I would piggyback on it, what Karen was saying, is that we need that information from administrators to tell us what, you know, what, what's important, what isn't.
I think we all concur on the fact that uh, multipurpose rooms in high schools and those types of things exactly are very important, right? I'm the only person here that's been in a high school for 40 some years and uh, those types of things are needed. And I think the administration needs to come back to us and let us know. How needed is it? Is it something that needs to be done now? But you guys, I, I think the summary of this is, we need to be able to take a look at what can be eliminated, what can be added and stay in budget as close as we possibly can. So that's the big task that I think we're putting in front of you.
No, we'll take that on.
Okay. Right. I think uh, we've covered every uh, brick here. Not stones, but bricks. I know we do, that's why we got to keep on moving here. Um, taking a look at agenda item number nine, as we take a look at things here, because we've already gone, uncovered the elementary schools, I believe.
We'll do seven, eight, and nine together.
Okay, let's, let's move those together and get moving on it. Not that I'm trying to rush you, but I'm trying to, let's get this moving.
Alright, um, here I am again. We're um, with Brent Johnson. We're going to go through the 50% design update for the three elementary schools.
Sorry. Is everybody, Brent is the principal at Thomas Jefferson. Okay, sorry, just wanted to make sure. Welcome, thank you for coming.
Good evening.
So, we're going to go through the three schools, Thomas Jefferson, GD Jones, and John Marshall. Um, similar to the other presentations in the past, and then look for comments, feedback. And just hearing John Marshall show up, just a little bit of feedback maybe on that as well. Thanks. So, um, this is the referendum concept that the public has seen for um, Thomas Jefferson. You can see we have a new parking lot in the southeast corner. We're doing a s, uh, office remodel, a, you know, support services remodel. And then we did have some original referendum scope in the north end of the lot. Um, so far, we've had five design meetings um, with the district leadership team and the building design committee. And so this is the update of where we are today. So, we do have a 4K parking lot in the southeast corner, or southwest corner of the site. We have, you can see that there. This is still conceptual, so part of the fun that we have with this, you know, hearing all the conversations before, is we are looking at budget options. There's a need here. The need, the scope doesn't quite align, so as a team, we're working through on how to make that work. And then we are adding a concrete sidewalk to the south end. And there's other items like fencing, some tree work, things like that that are included in the scope. Um, but this is a concept of where we are today. I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that? Nope, okay. Alright, so this actually is the overall floor plans of what we're talking and spending a lot of that time in the meeting. Um, the light green bubbles show a lot of the ADA work. We have coves that we're repairing, um, adding grab bars to some of the toilet rooms, some door hardware, door replacement, and replacing a water cooler. And um, what you can see in the blown, blown up plan is the remodeled area where you can see the furniture showing. Um, the existing office is turning into four um, sub offices. Um, I believe they're for student services. And then if you look on the lower part, you can see the secure front entry sequence with the vestibule going into the reception area. We have the principal's office, a conference room, a couple of toilet rooms, and the health room has been relocated. So that's the extent of the remodeled scope um, that we've been working together on.
We've had some really great conversations with the people impacted within the building and I think we, through the process, have had some of the scope change on us about what Jefferson looks like. And so I've been very cognizant of trying to like, you know, what is the best bang for a buck and how do we prepare to meet the needs of whatever it may be in the future. And Jefferson, I feel very confident about. We're one of the largest elementary schools. We are, or a, at least very, one of the largest summer school sites typically. Uh, we're one of the largest 4K sites. So I, I think there's been a lot of great thinking here and with the money that we're looking to spend. I think we're dramatically improving safety in a couple of different facets and moving us forward to be a wonderful hub with tremendous architecture for the future of Wassa schools for the foreseeable future. So.
Sharon, uh, is, is everything that's proposed here part of the safety and security from the original scope?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's been no scope change here.
I've tried a couple of times.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Next. So the mechanical systems that we're looking at is we're relocating some HVAC grills, diffusers, um, other things for secure entry. We're adding a um, gas connection to the generator, so there's a new, a replacement generator that's going to be coming into the site. And then um, we're providing ADA compliant trap wraps, that's a plumbing thing for some of the laboratory fixtures. Actually, this slide is for a different building. This is for um, John Marshall. So, just to clarify, this is John Marshall's mechanical scope of work. So the electrical, we have power distribution lighting. Um, we are updating the power for the bottle filler. Uh, we are remodeling the lighting for LED with um, associated lighting controls. We are considering a light pole in the parking lot because it's very dark back there, so safety is a concern. Um, we're upgrading um, the video surveillance within the referendum scope. There has been other identified security issues with the cameras as well. So we're working with um, Cale Bushman and his team to be able to work that out together. And then one thing that has changed is we are not including any work for the clock PA system, um, because that's the old analog system and it would be replaced with a new analog system, which is not in the direction that the district's going. Any questions on that?
Well, I think I've had experience, this has been really neat and valuable. Just in the, the inflation and what we're talking about, like, for the budget that we had, we really were working on trying to retain the original scope and function and safety of the project. And that gets difficult, like, the longer that we continue to move. We are experiencing that in the meetings and working uh, with the plan that we have put in front of you. But it's certainly been a good experience and I understand that inflation and the impact it has on what we get for the money, uh, in a much different way.
I just have one question about the fact, you made a comment that you were replacing the analog system with another, an upgrade or nothing whatsoever? Just keeping that?
We're doing no work. We're keeping the existing system. We'll tweak it if we move walls and things like that. As the walls move, the system will move.
Right.
But we're, we remove the scope of work to replace the system in its entirety.
And eventually, having a digital system is going to be the way that's going to have to go. And John, you realize that. So, there's a cutback.
And John and his team has been working with us as well, so we're all on the same page. They've been attending those meetings as well. Alright, so the next update is GD Jones. This scope is very limited. Um, some of these projects, you know, as compared to West and John Muir, um, this is, one's actually quite small. So essentially, all we're looking at here is um, a secure entry on, from the referendum scope. And then there's a couple of other items that I'll point out as we go through. So we've had three design meetings to date, got feedback from the principal and maintenance on what needs to occur there. Next. Um, so this is the update. Again, there's, there was some basic curb and um, minor work included in the referendum scope. That work has been completed, or there might be some minor areas um, to move forward with. Again, the scope is very small. Um, we're not anticipating to have a whole lot of work outside here. So this is probably the biggest part of this. Um, you know, I'll just touch on the ADA upgrades real quick and then swing back to the secure entry. So we're doing grab bars, um, the pipe wrap, um, hand railings throughout on the stairwells to upgrade them to ADA stainless. And then we're looking at um, replacing or re, you know, some of the coves that are not ADA compliant. And then we're doing some doors and frames throughout the building, generally focusing on ADA um, as a main focus. Um, we are adding a building sign to the front of the building. Nothing major, it's just going to match the existing signage around the building just to show where the entrance is. And then um, we are doing a secure front entry, which was interesting because um, if you can look at the slide, you can see the green is, I just call it updates, and there isn't really any renovation there, but we are replacing um, some of the security hardware to make sure that the doors function in the secure fashion that's been, we've been following with the two different containment areas. We are um, isolating off that green area from the cafeteria, so there's no cross-through traffic. And um, we're gon, we're going to be replacing some of the sliding windows and some, with bank teller windows. So there's just a better separation of the front staff from the um, what they call a parent waiting area. So, none of the office staff will be within that zone. So that's actually a little bit different, but it's a little more secure. But that's also based on the existing building design, that we were able to do that. So there's a little bit of cost savings there that we were able to achieve.
Sharon, are we using, um, you know, a specific glass, or are we using that glass that has that coating, that film that we talked about before?
Yeah, we're using the same film or coating, depending on whether it's new or existing.
One other question on security factors here. Uh, now, all the elementary schools, if I'm not mistaken, the entry on the outside did not have cameras. Are, are we putting cameras on the outside and then also on the inside of the uh, entrance, the secure entrance areas?
So, um, the camera work is a little bit separate from the front entry work. And we are moving cameras around as needed to serve in those spaces. But as far as like adding new exterior cameras, um, that's not part of our scope of work, um, based on the specific entry. But we are, that's where we're working with Cale's team, with those additional cameras, to figure out a plan to move forward, because some of these projects have more cameras in them than others. Um, this one doesn't have a whole lot. Actually, if we go to the electrical slide, the engineers are just getting started. Um, so, we are doing some camera work, but it's not extensive and that's what we're working with Cale's team on, to identify those locations.
I can, for Jefferson, specific to your question, uh, Cale met with myself and the custodial uh, team to talk about where the cameras are, where our holes are, and what our ideal state would be. Part of that did include the new vestibule, because it's quite ineffective the way that it's set up right now. So, in that planning for the new construction work, we talked about where the cameras could be better placed to make it much more safe and functional.
That's, my biggest concern about the fact that you've had, you have analog cameras in there now, because they're old cameras. And IP, um, address cameras, do we have any plans for those? Lance once time, told me that I was uh, scoping out the school when I walked in. But I'm always very conscious of how we cover security-wise with cameras.
Yeah, there, we just upgraded, um, about three years ago, the number of cameras. So they're all hooked in this Genetek system and monitored. I don't believe we're moving into IP uh, cameras at this point, so they're all so hard-wired in our system, but.
Okay.
Are we putting in at least what um, our consultant, Mr. Trump, had asked us to? Are we going past that?
We have a plan based to, to build to that.
To build to it, okay.
From a safety perspective, I think, it, they would say you can never have enough cameras for things, so we need to go to where we improve each year.
And that's my problem, Cale. I, I always feel there are never enough cameras around the building and especially entrance areas and that. We've gone through those types of things in the past together, yeah.
They are in need of significant upgrade, I can say unequivocally, at Jefferson.
Okay. I didn't mean to take up a lot of time on that.
It's a good discussion. Um, so there wasn't much mechanical work here either, so I'll just stay, it's a, you know, reacting to the secure entrance changes. Um, and then back on the electrical slide, you know, any kind of changes required um, for the secure entry modifications, that would be card access, um, moving cameras around like we were talking about. We are upgrading the fire alarm system for remote access at the maintenance, the mob, and then tweaking the camera system as we get feedback coming back in. So again, this is also another site where we're not, we're removing the scope to um, replace the clock PA system with a new analog system. Again, following in the direction that the district's taking as far as those systems go. Okay. So John Marshall, um, again, we're at the 50% side, so um, based on our earlier conversation, let us know quickly if we want to shift this one around. Um, you know, if there's scope changes, things like that. Um...
That's Thomas Jefferson.
Doing well.
We could do more stuff if you, you know.
Yeah, skip that one. I don't know what.
Imagine John Marshall.
Yeah. Things are twisting. Anyway, thank you for your patience in, in helping me out with this. Um, so anyway, we've had four design meetings with the John Marshall staff. Do you want to keep going? And so, now I'm paranoid. That's okay. Um, so anyway, what we're doing here at John Marshall is the base ref, I'll use this slide for the base referendum scope. So we are doing some work at the north parking lot with pickup and drop-off with the buses. Um, and then the generator's going, we're looking And then the generator is going, we're looking at adding a generator, the north behind the building there. It's currently inside the building because of code issues. We are moving it outside. And as far as other site work goes, we're looking at a curb cut on the south side of the building. You can see the five cars. There's actually a power pole that's running through there. So we're looking up creative solutions. We'll probably add a second set of five cars to help alleviate some of the traffic concerns on the street below. So we're still working, you know, this is fairly reasonable for a 50% design. We're still working through some of those design challenges that came up. But as a team, we're not really focusing on that. We agreed to not focus on the north lot anymore and the curb cuts on the south side of the property are much more important. So that's where we're shifting our efforts. So we think we can get the 10 cars in between the power poles. And so we're working on that right now. And then again, we decided as a team to not work on the north lot. Next. So with that, we're looking here at a secure front entry and ADA upgrades, which includes handrails and some pipe wraps. So again, not a huge extensive scope of work. And that front entry is fairly straightforward where we're just extending, adding that, if you look in the southeast corner of the plan, that's where the front entry is. We just added a little bit vestibule going through the office and out. And so that, this, the scope of work inside is fairly limited. Next. So this looks a lot like the other slide. So the mechanical work here we have is relocating the grills, diffusers, bringing natural gas to the new generator location and just some pipe wrap for the, where the exposed piping is to protect people in a wheelchair. So electrical, we're doing adjustments to the scope of work, you know, fire alarm, security, telecom for the secure entrance. We're doing some, we're replacing an older electrical panel in the library. We're replacing the existing generator with a new one outside. And then again, this also is no work for the clock PA system. You know, we're just tweaking it as required for remodeled access. So any questions?
Any from the board?
Do you have any idea what the cost breakdown is on the Thomas Jefferson work? As I remember, the, the projected cost for the secure entrance was real low. It's like $30,000, it's probably more now, but that was real low. And I don't know, remember what the ADA was, but.
Actually, the earlier slide had all the budgets that we're carrying for each of those three sites.
Yeah, that would be the whole site. So the whole site would be, it was like $500,000 or $600,000 originally and more like $700 something thousand dollars now. But I'm wondering how that breaks down if we decide that we want to hold on this, for example. It would seem to me that a very inexpensive secure entrance would be good whether that building is there for 100 years or we're building a brand new one in two years. Like that's worth it. And it seems like the ADA compliant stuff ought to happen for the kids that are there right now. So what about some of that other stuff?
So I hear you saying, are you, you're interested in maybe, are there any recommendations to reduce some scope?
Yeah.
We'll do that. We'll break down the work there by.
And knowing now that you're bidding these in a package also may impact that recommendation as well because you may come back and say, look, if we take this out in the grand scheme of things, those three, three schools, it's really not going to make much difference. I mean, I don't know, you know, I'd rely on you to tell me that.
Yeah. So you're looking, you're looking at John Marshall in particular?
Well, we know that Jefferson and Jones are not, they're, it's impossible that those would be on the list of schools that would close, so.
There's not much there for now. There's a couple hundred thousand worth of scope there. But no, we'll, we'll do that for John Marshall, similar to Hawthorne Hills. We'll break down the components.
And we can do that for next time.
Maybe you can just design us a brand new school for John Marshall, I'd add it to. That's what I'd really like to see.
Curve cuts?
I don't think that's possible.
Wow, not with that attitude, it's not.
Any questions on the three schools?
Optimist.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Okay. Now we can move to agenda item number nine. Administration seeks further clarification of directions related to board action from November 13th.
Yep. Just going back to carry on this conversation, I think I can be pretty quick, kind of advanced, Cassie. So this was the, this was the motion that we took action on. That's what we were trying to planning from. I don't think there's any question about the middle and high schools, but when we came back to talk about a consultant related to elementary consolidation, I think there was maybe some, some disagreement about that. But that's, that was the actual motion. So that's kind of like starting from scratch. If you go forward, Cassie. So there, there was a lot of conversation about consultants and one of the questions was how do districts use consultants? Do we, do we set goals and hire people to help us achieve those or does the consultant help us develop those goals? Had a number of conversations with districts, excuse me, and some consultants, architects, contractors, demographers. And all of them said, in their experience, they've always been involved in some kind of a study and that study then informs the goals. Now, I added on here, we already have two studies that have been done. We have a facility and an adequacy study that was done in 2015-ish and that was done by Nexus. So we have a big binder that has a whole list of, you know, life expectancies for roofs and, you know, and mechanical and plumbing. So we have that piece and we have the demographic projection from Applied Populations Lab out of UW Madison from 2020. So.
And we have, sorry, we have one other piece too, which is we have all the referendum, elementary referendum money that we pulled out of the prior referendum. So we know in a general sense, you can add however many percentage points you want to add onto that 60 or 70 million, what we needed to do, what we wanted to do at each of the buildings as well.
Correct, yeah. And those, that scope for those elementaries was built from that facility study and that adequacy from, from Nexus in 2015. And you know, some of that obviously has been done, but we could just advance those, those dates. So those are two valuable pieces of information. I didn't do anything with the, the Nexus study, but if you go ahead, one, Cassie, this is just the summary of that Applied Populations Lab. There's about a, I don't know, 30-page report, lot of detail, but basically it says what we all know, that the, the population's going to decline, younger, we're getting fewer younger kids and more older folks. There was that bubble in the middle schools. We know that's kind of moving into the high schools now and, and then from there on we, you know. So, so we do have some, some information. It is not granular, right? A demographer could do basically neighborhood lifecycle kinds of studies, right? And say, you know, the John Marshall neighborhood, the Stotin neighborhood, they would talk to all of the, the, the different village and town boards and the city and they would do construction projections and they, it would be a much more thorough projection. This, this had some of that, but, but not, not, not to that degree. So, so those are two pieces of information we already have. If you go one, I think I got two more slides. Oh, actually, this might be the last one. So I'm just throwing out for consideration, we heard, obviously heard tonight, there's still an interest in possibly, you know, changing our elementary footprint. And that's certainly a direction we could go. I just want to throw out for consideration, is, would this be a good time to make another half step back and maybe recreate a strategic plan? When I came here in 2018, there was a whole series of school and community listening sessions. Those, we did, we took all that feedback with a data scan, environmental scan of the district and the region. We got about 100 district staff together. We created the whole child, whole Wassa strategic plan, very homegrown. We had made some progress. Then of course we hit a pandemic and then really our focus shifted to the referendum and the restructuring work. So right now we are continuing generally on that plan. You know, we're, we continue to work on, on instruction and assessment work and our Leader in Me was an outcome of that plan. There was, there was some, some progress there, but would the board be interested in, I, I guess what I'm looking for is, do you want to continue to focus on the elementary footprint piece? Or do you want to take maybe a broader look and redevelop, hire someone to help us redevelop a strategic plan, revisit our, our strategic vision? Wondering what direction the board has an interest in going.
Go around the horn. Start to my left.
Well, I think personally, I feel like we still need to develop, you know, a consolidation for elementary schools. I mean, that's kind of what I want to see. As, as I was one that voted to continue with our restructuring, so you know, I was in the minority, but, so I would definitely want to see anything we can do to reduce the footprint a little bit. I mean, this data is just showing what we already know. As far as the need for a new strategic plan, it might be something that we could look into to help us develop, you know, what the best consolidation maneuvers are, but I don't know.
Well, the motion and what happened with Pat's plan, I hope everyone understands that that was not to stop looking at consolidating our footprint. We are, I don't think we need to bring a consultant in to tell us what we already know, that people aren't having as many kids. We have demographic shift happening, happening in this community that's been happening for the last two decades. You know, maybe a consultant could come in and help pinpoint exactly which, you know, schools would make sense to consolidate. That's going to come at a price tag, right? If we're going to consolidate, because the way the restructuring was set up with what we were talking about is that we're going to be able to fit and mold pieces in and not have to ask for really any more funding to accomplish that. But taking the high schools and the middle schools out of this, I agreed with Karen at that, at that meeting, let's take it a smaller chunk at a time. And I think the elementary footprint is what we have to focus on. And so what does that mean? It's going to mean reducing that footprint and probably adding on to wherever, you know, we're placing those students in, in the school, we're going to have to add a, you know, a gym or a cafeteria. Some of the work that you said, Lance, that we kind of pulled out would have to be done in order to truly consolidate this footprint. I, I have constituents and people talk to me about, well, I want to lower my taxes and you know, that's what we should be focusing on. Well, you're not going to do that with 13 elementary facilities, especially aging ones, that we have to heat and cool and snow removal and landscaping and replacing roofs and plumbing and all the other things that go into maintaining 13 facilities for our elementary footprint. So I think we need to move forward with figuring out exactly what it's going to look like or what it needs to look like and what that cost is. And if a referendum would be needed to achieve that so that the public and the community can vote on it. And if they don't vote for something like that, then I, you know, we're back to square one and looking at possibly a larger restructure, so.
Go ahead, Karen. Thank you, John.
I agree with much of that. I, I think right now it's time to continue, like I'm not ready to stop moving forward with the action that this board needs to take with right sizing the district. So while it'd be nice to look at a new strategic plan, I don't think we should stop. I don't really feel like we're starting from scratch. I don't necessarily agree with that heading. I feel like we've learned a lot along the way and that maybe gives it a bit of a negative tone that I just think that what we learned is we can't do a merger of high schools without a referendum and we don't have that money and so we can't do that with excellence. That has not changed what we need to look at from an elementary standpoint, in my opinion. And so a couple of things that I think we do need to do, this applied population study was done, or the results were given to us April 2020.
2020.
So the data is from pre-pandemic.
Correct.
So I guess to me, this is outdated data and I would prefer to see a more thorough look through a demographer that does look specifically at neighborhoods, at growth, at construction. I think, I don't know if that's part of the reason. Wassa East maybe has not turned out to be the best decision and the best location and everything else because we didn't look deep enough and close enough back when that was done. And so I don't want this to just be a general guess, pre-pandemic numbers. I think these need to be a much more specific look so that we can come to the community and say, listen, we've done the work. We know where the growth is going to be. We know, and then, and we can, I think, from when I think, look at wanting to have that more forecasted enrollment study right now, what that looks like. We can maybe then come up with goals as a board to say, okay, in order to make right sizing our footprint, we're going to say, we want all classrooms to be from this size to this size, right? Keeping in mind, obviously, our AGR schools and of course, but we don't want school, classrooms that have 11 students in it. And we don't want classrooms that have 29 students in it. And that maybe is one of our goals. And we want this much classroom or building usage percentage wise in every building. That's another goal. And when we, or, you know, not necessarily a hard goal, but something, a vision that we might say to the demographers that are doing these studies, these are kind of the things that we're looking at. Help us to see with the projected growth and neighborhood construction, et cetera, what you would recommend, which schools are potentially going to need to be eliminated and where, you know, do we need to do additions, et cetera? And that's going to be another referendum that everybody knew when we passed the last one was coming, that we would need for the elementary work, which we took off on that one. So that's my thoughts.
Good. Lance?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to redo the district-wide strategic plan, the whole child, whole Wassa. I do think we should continue to move forward with looking at elementary footprint. I agree with Karen, we're not really starting from scratch. The elementary committee that met over the course of the summer that I attended, I learned a lot from administration in that and from the community members, what their interests were in that. I mean, things, and that's where that idea of trying to move neighborhoods and schools together came from. We talked about, you know, we learned about how we have to keep our AGR schools together so that we don't lose that funding and just all the things that we talked about. I think that's all still applicable and valuable information. You know, and like Karen, you brought up having the, you know, the more consistent class sizes. That's another benefit that comes from consolidation. The more sections you have in a school, the more evenly they'll be spread. If you have a one section school, you're going to have your elevens and your 29s. Don't, you don't have any sections to spread it out. So a lot of that work that we did is, still applies, so I think that's, that's good. To, to restructure, to consolidate the elementary schools could be with a referendum if we want to continue to move, if we want to move entire schools together like we were planning with the first plan, that would require a referendum. But we also could do it without a referendum if we had boundary changes. If we, if we decided to go that route, then I'd think it would be good to have a consultant in to help us with studying our boundaries and making boundary, I don't want to say decisions, but recommendations. So I think that getting the demographer would be good and then maybe somebody for boundaries if that's the direction the board goes. If the board wants to go the referendum direction, which is add on to schools so that we can combine two together and not have big boundary shifts, then I don't really know what a consultant would tell us for that. We kind of know which buildings those would have to be.
Well, one of the things about a third-party consultant is, it's no one here that's taken any subjectivity at it, but truly coming in and giving us some very objective points of view based on the data. That's just my follow-up on, on that.
Well, something, just real quick, the timelines that we were just shown, we're up against a wall.
We are.
And what we're talking about is probably not going to be figured out by February. And I would hate to see money being hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars being spent on a school that is ultimately consolidated or, or, you know, closed. That would be a pretty poor use of funds.
I don't think anybody's going to argue that, John. I think that is, that's one of the things that is being talked about in the community heavily about the fact that, well, you're not going to put money into a possible building that might be sold and that. So that's kind of a given, but I, I still fall back on the fact that a third-person party coming in gives an objective point of view where there's no subjectivity in it that we all may have with that. So Joanna?
I do believe we still need to keep looking at the restructure of our elementary schools. So I mean, I support doing that and looking at a demographer to move forward with that.
Jennifer?
I would also support a third-party consultant just to take that objectivity out of it, even if we don't think that there is any. We wouldn't want the community to think that there may have been some when the decisions are made. there may have been some when the decisions are made.
I don't have anything to add, you guys have said all of it.
That's one of the bad.
You have to have a third.
I got to have you as a first person, so that you're not always at the end.
It's all right, it's all right. I, I don't like any government entity having to spend money on strategic plans or this third-party strategies. We do this at the village to figure out stormwater. I, I don't like that, but you have to take it away from administrators, you have to take it away from public officials, you know, the elected officials, us, and have somebody that is separate. And unfortunately, it's just part of the system, so.
Okay, we've gone around the table here, Dr. Hiltz?
So process. I, I'm hearing an interest in a demographer. Would you like me to bring a few for you to consider? Do you want to do interviews? I'm assuming the board wants to select this organization or this person? Or would you like me to do some initial interviews and bring you a recommendation? What's your, what's your feeling on that?
We're not meeting until January 8th now. And if we don't do anything right now until January 8th, goes back to what you just said, John, we're a bit tweaks in between right now. We need to get moving forward. So I would strongly suggest that the administration takes a look at this to begin with and then bring it back to us so that we can make a decision early January.
Yeah.
I think, I, you, I. I think that's especially true for the demographer.
Yes.
Okay.
If, I, I want, I want more input if we're going to hire somebody that's going to say, we're going to study your whole district, and we're going to make recommendations for billions of boundaries. I'd kind of like to hear the pitch, like, what do you do? Give me some schools you've done. But from the demographer standpoint, I think.
Let's move forward.
Take it.
That's got to be your first step.
Yeah.
Okay, good place to start, thank you.
So with that, agenda item number 10. I'm seeking a motion to enter into closed session to discuss improved administrative contracts. And at this point in time, we would have a roll call on that as well. So the motion is, I'm seeking a motion to enter in session to discuss.
I will make the motion to enter into closed session.
Second.
Second.
John Krieger?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
Yes.
Jennifer Fioli? Joanna Reyes? Corey Sillers?
Yes.
Lance Trowop?
Yes.
Karen Vanderburg?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes. All righty, thank you very much.